I'm gonna stop streaming until seven, okay?
Yes.
Alright. Okay Fran, it's live.
Okay, go on.
Fran, can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I don't see you.
Well, that's why, I guess that's the way it's gonna be, when I hit the video button, it says, "We cannot connect to your webcam. Is the webcam installed properly, or are you using it in another application?"
Alright, one minute. Jason, are you there? Jason, Oaks?
Yes.
Are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you try to help Jerry Tasty, he can't get his picture on, and I have two of you.
Yeah, I'm on twice. Jerry, what's the problem?
Uh, hear me, but when I try to hit start video, it says, "We cannot connect to your webcam. Is the webcam installed properly, or are you using it in another application?"
That might mean, do you have anything else that could be open?
Once again?
Do you have anything else that could be open, using the webcam right now?
No.
The only thing, is it one that you plug in, with like a USB?
Uh, I don't know. I've never had a problem, I think WebEx is the worst type of remote thing ever, but out of the day, it's never been a problem before.
Yeah, the only thing you can try to do is unplug the camera itself, if it's one of the ones that plugs in, and plug it back in, because it sounds like it's saying that it's not installed.
Nah, the camera's like in the, in the, in the laptop, you know.
Oh, it's built in, alright. Uh, yeah, that might be a problem with the camera itself at that point.
I was on before, I was on before.
Did you restart the whole computer?
I'm sorry.
That's what I was gonna recommend, Jason, just reboot.
No, turn it off and start again?
Yeah, hit start and restart.
Alright, I'll turn off the computer, I'll be back.
I'm here.
Fran? Yes, I'm here. Jason, I can't get, uh... Jason, are you still there? I can't get Hal Halverson on, he says there's no place to sign in, to say, and I can't find my other one here.
You don't have to sign in, you just click the link and it opens up.
No, but he doesn't have the right one to collect the link, he's got the, um... He's got the access code and the password, but he can't, doesn't have the one that's "Join".
Fran, can't you send him a copy of the email with the link?
I'm trying to from my cellphone, but I can't do it.
Uh, let me see if I can do it, I have your link. I'll see if I can find the email, because that's what I used.
Right, that's what I'm trying to do, and I can't find it.
Terry, I'm gonna forward it to you.
Um, I'm gonna forward, alright, I found it, Fran sent it Friday.
Does it say, uh, "Join"? Okay, send it to, oh wait, let me see if this goes.
Yeah, I'm trying to find a forward on here, I got the message.
Terry, I'm gonna copy and paste and just send it to you, you can shoot it off to him if you want.
Uh, please.
Alright, I just sent it out.
Alright. I'll wait for it to come in. Still waiting, is that Jason? Oh, there it is, I got it. Alright, let me try to forward a copy to Hal.
Do you have Hal Halverson's?
I have H. Halverson 101 at.
Yes, that's it.
Okay, alright, Jason, I'm gonna copy you, just to be sure.
Sure.
Hal, this is the meeting link. Alright, I just send it to Hal.
Okay. It looks like everybody is on.
Waiting for Jerry to come back, I don't see him. I'm gonna send Jerry the same thing I just sent Hal, he should be able to do the same thing, if his camera's not jammed up.
Okay, so, we need Hal, and then we're good to go. Fire flan of me, I, you gotta get up and then come back in with your application and fun.
Hi, I'm back, you got me?
Oh, there you go.
Terry, you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Jerry, I just sent you another copy of the link, just in case. Alright, we got Jerry, we're on a roll.
Alright, let's go to work.
I agree.
Me and Jason, we're the new Lakewood IT team.
Thank you, wherever the IT fellow went, thank you.
No problem.
Thanks, Jason.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're good.
Drop the robe.
I need a speaker. I can't hear too much. I, there, there is.
Speaker.
Okay, there's, there's a mayor. Thought I saw Morty in the same, uh...
Morty's here. My shingba, I think, is not here yet, anybody see my shingba? Yeah, there's my shingba.
Yeah, Morty's here.
Okay, we ready to go? Abe Halveston, are you there?
Chairman Abe?
Abe, you there? Mayor Gelli just went together.
Raviano, are you there?
I see Nick's, uh...
I see the name.
Icon.
There's too many on now, I don't know what's affect us.
Well, Fran, I'm on, you want me to jump off?
Nick, yeah, you can come back when you're up, thank you.
How am I gonna know when I'm up, if I'm not on?
Come back in, uh, I don't know, you're the last one.
Nick, I think the meeting's streaming online.
You got time?
Yes, Fran.
Yes, go to our website, LakewoodNJ.gov.
Can we split the screen to beards on one side?
Anybody see Abe Halveston besides Justin?
Discriminating against mustaches, Adam.
Terry, we'll take you on our side.
Hello guys.
Camera, is she there?
I am here.
Okay.
Okay, we're ready to go when you are.
I have a problem with my machine.
We don't have to see you, we can hear you.
Do you see me?
No.
Yeah, but we can hear you, Abe. Okay, hold on.
Do we, do we want to see you? Boy, John? Abe, I'd rather see you than hear you.
There you go.
Come here, honey.
It's good. Connect to the webcam, the webcam installed is, oh, hold on a minute.
That sounds like Jerry all over again.
Hold on a minute.
Let's get it started, Abe, with everything else.
Okay, so start, start, start the meeting, I'm trying to fix my machine.
You start.
Oh, it's, and you just need a minute.
Should I do a roll call in the meantime?
Yes, you do a roll call.
Okay, Mr. Gelli? Mr. Gelli?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Mr. Halverson?
Here.
Is he there?
Yeah.
Mr. Langley?
Here.
Naftali's, is Naftali here?
I'm here.
Okay, Bibiatt is not here, Ingber is here somewhere. My shingba.
Am I on?
Yes, you're on, but we can't see you.
We need my shingba, I know he's here, somewhere.
Can see his icon at the bottom of the screen.
Right.
I'm going to, I'm going to log off and reboot my computer, let me see what I can do, okay guys, give me a minute, Franny, continue the roll call, I'll be right back on.
Alright, and I'm gonna try to call my shingba.
He's there.
She's gonna be on in a second.
He, he's off.
Okay, I mean, I see him.
He will be back on in two minutes. We could end the meeting.
His secretary just said he'll be on in a second.
Okay.
That's not the number, but I know, I recognize that 779, 779, work, or, oh, Jemmy's 3779.
I think we have seven members on.
And a baby.
On the screen, we have seven members.
Oh, Franny, I thought that was you crying.
You can only see me in the corner, but I'm not moving, so I can eat my ice cream and everything.
Can you draw call?
I'm up to Mr. Ingber.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Okay, Mr. Gross?
Here.
Gonzalez? I'm the Halveston of someplace, okay.
He knows those, the red thing, let me know.
More pizza, what are you doing behind that piece of paper?
We ready to start yet now, or what?
Yeah.
We're, we're ready for Abe Halveston.
Alrighty.
Well, first is, appeal number 4152, Austin Village.
Franny, we have lots to do, we gotta pledge allegiance, it's not a football game.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Technically, we're all on our knees. Or worse. I'm standing for the flag.
We didn't even do it.
Obie. Obie.
We can do salute to the flag, if you guys want.
Yes.
Salute the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands...
Okay, can I get an approval of the minute for July 20th?
One minute, Obie announced that it was, uh, the meeting was noticed.
Yeah, this meeting was noticed, according to the sunshine law.
I need a motion for the mittles for July 20th.
Motion. Motion by Mayor, by Ingber, second by Abraham Naftali, roll call.
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Halverson?
I didn't attend.
Mr. Langley?
Yes.
And Naftali?
Good.
Mr. Bibiatt? Not here, Mr. Ingber?
Ingber?
He's better. My shingba?
Unmute yourself.
I need my shingba.
Go back then, go to next guy.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Halveston.
Yes. Okay, do we have any correspondence, Franny?
Yeah.
No correspondence? Can we get all four together? What's happening?
We need Abe Halveston.
Get on. We're gonna start with appeal number 4152. We can village condo association.
Thank you.
Case I'd like to carry. I don't know if I...
Mr. Pfeifer, put on your, who says that?
Kishuba.
You wanna cry this application?
For the applicant, are you?
Uh, no, I'm here on, not this application, one of the, one of the later applications, wish to carry.
Which application you talking about, Joseph?
4154, 698 River Ave.
Oh, okay.
Did you say 4154, is that what you said, sir?
Correct.
Well, I know that Mr. Kishuba, no disrespect, you're not the attorney for the applicant, is there an attorney for the applicant on this?
Uh, they do not, they have not retained an attorney, and the applicant is not here.
Well, why, what's the reason for the request for the adjournment?
Uh, the applicant is unavailable, and we provided some documents from the, we had a discussion with the board engineer earlier today, uh, but, uh, we provided some documents from the town regarding some objections that we wish to review.
Uh, I don't know about that.
We're ready to go, you're number one on old news, Mr. Kishuba. You're number one on new news.
I understand that, this is the first time that we're, uh, we're listed, uh, we do know there's a number of objectors, and we'd like the opportunity to work out, put something out with them before, and before the board.
Chairman, you're closer.
I just logged on, guys.
Mr. Kishuba, you gonna revise the plans, and get a traffic study?
Uh, we intend, uh, one of the main things we're going to do, is get a traffic study done, and have our traffic expert do it. I know that's one of the best subjects.
Abie, just a quick time speed, uh, applicant, appeal number 4154, 698 River Ave, who wants to carry the application.
Okay.
Because they wanna talk to you, they have many objectives, and they also wanna add study to the application.
Because why, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you?
Because they have objectors that they wanna work with.
Okay.
And they also wanna add, uh, traffic study to the application.
Okay.
They also haven't done, ended attorney.
Okay.
Mr. Kishuba, for what it's worth, uh, the applicant's an LLC, and he has to have an attorney representing him.
Is there, who's here for the applicant right now? Who's on here for the applicant right now?
Joe Kishuba, the engineer on the application.
Do we have an attorney on this application?
They have not retained an attorney at this point, no.
So then, so then we can't hear, so then we can't hear this application to begin with?
I'd recommend, Chairman, that you call a motion, that you consider a motion to put it off until...
So, so we can't, we can't hear this application to begin with, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct, we wish, I think, we wish we had known that before, quarter after seven, on the night of the application, but here we are.
Ready to make a motion, being asked.
Is this with notice or without notice?
Uh, I think they should notice again, there's been a lot of, uh, application, a lot of, um, correspondence on this, and I think the public should be, would know about it again.
Not only that, but if they're gonna add, if they're gonna add documents to it, they have to renotice.
Yes, and have the documents, and have the documents on... And have the documents and the traffic report on file 10 days before the hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Kishuba, are they revising the plans also?
Uh, well, you don't know yet, we need to talk to the deckers and determine that, at this point...
Make a motion with notice, when, ready?
Yeah, that's it, let's go.
Okay, who made that motion?
Motion.
Hold seconds.
More pizza.
I can't hear who made the motion.
Oh, Slankley.
Anell second.
Which second was Gelli? Mr. Gelli?
Chifra?
Mr. Halverson? Mr. Langley?
Yes.
Mr. Naftali?
Yes.
Mr. Ingber? Ingber, is he there? Yes. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Mr. Halveston?
Yes.
Mr. Kishuba, please advise your client that he has to have an attorney, or the matter will be dismissed without prejudice next meeting, okay?
Good, thank you.
Back to Covington, 4152.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
We got you.
I'm here.
Good evening, Chairman Adam Feffer, tenor of the applicant, along with Mike Gross, uh, as the board recalls, uh, last time, we, before the board, uh, was a significant amount of correspondence that had come in, from, from the, uh, association, individual members, um, voicing certain concerns and, and, um, concerns regarding this application. Based upon that, we asked the board for an opportunity to address each of those correspondence, uh, items. We recently had a meeting with, uh, the association and, uh, individual members, uh, we subsequently put together significant packets, which has been sent and distributed to each of the, the members. However, additionally, uh, based upon that meeting, we have gone back at the actual application, there were some concerns voiced by the board members, regarding how are the two, what we call independent, um, developments going to mesh together, as there are some, some, some of the items that are shared. We have put together a sketch regarding, uh, a new plan, but that was not able to have gotten into the board in enough time for your review. Um, so, while we have submitted, uh, our responses to all the individual opposition or, or concern, uh, we look like an opportunity to, to take a look at, and have the board engineer review, a new design plan for the road. If, or would give us that opportunity, we would like to do that, um, for this one more, uh, one more meeting.
Uh, Chairman, may I, thank Mr. Feffer.
Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, we want to try to mute their thing, if they're not talking, because somebody's got a lot of interference here. But secondly, uh, we had agreed last month to adjourn the application until tonight, the last time it was actually heard was in June, and the reason to adjourn, because of the applicant, to adjourn it to tonight, so that they would have an opportunity to respond in detail to, uh, all of the emails we've been receiving, they've done that. It was understood, there's nothing... Someone please, there was understood, there's not gonna be any more testimony, just a summation from the applicant's attorney. There was, there was an understanding, there's not gonna be anything new submitted, other than a response to the emails, so I don't know why we can't go forward with justice of the estimation.
So, so again, and, 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 Jerry, I agree with everything you're saying, and we did submit, just like we said, all those, those responses to the, to the correspondence we received, however, in addition, they differ, the one item that's different, is that when we met with the association, and we had a meeting, we had an socially-distanced meeting in the parking lot, with members of, of the, of the homeowners, um, and they voiced certain, certain comments and concerns, and, and we would like, again, we would like the opportunity to address those, as those were new items that came back. I agree, I understand what you're saying, that there was no new testimony, um, but I'm just putting it out there, that based upon those meetings, um, we heard some, some new, some new comments, some further comments, and we're trying to, to make those, um, to alleviate those concerns.
Based upon your discussions with the homeowners, and that's always well encouraged, can't you just talk about that in your submitting, and perhaps make those changes, a condition of any approval, this grant? I mean, this, this application is going on for every year.
I understand, it's been going on, I, I, again, I have no objection to, I just wanna make sure, again, you're given clear instructions, no new items of testimony, if you're gonna give us that leeway to go ahead and bring that in, I'm just pointing out that your board engineer's not gonna have an opportunity to review it, you know, in the past, uh, as I've heard in many meetings, uh, it's always a concern, hey, why are you doing this, um, why didn't we have an opportunity to review this plan? Uh, all I'm saying is, based upon, we listened to the board, we did everything the board said, we submitted a very large package, and it'll take some time to go, but in addition, we have a new, uh, new concept, that modified some of, some of the roadways, that alleviates some of the concerns, um, and based upon that, all we're saying is, hey, do you wanna give, can we at least get one more, uh, chance to go ahead and show this, to make the best application possible, both for, uh, the homeowners, for board members, uh, for the township.
Chairman, it starts with you with the zoning board, I don't know why they can't just, uh, provide a summary of their, your location, and include whatever changes they're recommending, we could, we could presumably make them a condition of the approval, and at the time of resolution compliance, we would make sure that that was completed.
So, I'll, I'll play my, I'll play my position, which has been, always been a position, we don't, we, we at the zoning board over here, don't, don't like to go ahead and, and make changes, especially if there's drastic changes, I have no idea what the changes are, I've heard yet, but if there are anything important changes, I think Terry should have a chance to review it. Um, one thing I do like, back then, that the applicant has finally listened to the board, that we won't be shoved around because they wanna have an application, um, approved, but they've listened to us, and saw where the downfalls are, especially after they tore all the objections from the people in the, in the, uh, development, right now. One second, who's, who, who's speaker is on, because I have a lot of back noise over here, a lot of static, can, if you're not speaking, turn off your, your mics. Okay, it sounds a lot better.
Um, um, so, so mov- moving forward, you know, and, and in one way, I'm pleased and happy that the applicant finally realized that you can't just bring in an application and decide to present it the way, the way you want to present it. Yeah, I mean, on the other side, I don't like to hear, um, um, applications with items that are not known to, to Terry if it's really, um, feasible or not. Unless it's a minute, minute, small change, yeah, I'll listen to it. But if it's anything major, then, then, then I, then I, I won't listen to it. Um, um, having said that, if you want to just, if you just want to, if you just want to broach on that, um, what your changes are, if it's anything, anything major, we'll decide if we want to have Terry look at it or not. You know, and if it's very simple, maybe we'll just listen to it and, and go for a vote. That, that would be my opinion. Anyone have anything else to say?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead. Abram, go ahead.
Um, I, i- it's very nice that I can speak to everybody and try to plan, but I think this is a completely new application. And, uh, and I'm not, I personally am happy with what I see. I re-honested one document, which has not been produced, and it should have been produced day, day one. It's not been there. And that was the minutes from the first meeting, which you claimed that eighty-three percent of the people voted yes for, for whatever the plan was. That was not produced. Everything else was produced. There's a judge letter saying that that's what happened. I don't see, I never saw the names of who voted, who, what was discussed. I see that this application is going towards a brand-new thing. I like what I hear, but I, 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 in my opinion, this is a brand-new application. This is, this one is finished. If we want to vote on this one, it should be voted as is. If you want to vote on anything else, it's a brand-new application, start from scratch. Other than that, I'm, I'm really not happy with, with what I see. I don't think that, yes, you've heard a lot of what the board said, but I think some of the main points the board asked, what's it for, we're not, and I'm, I'm so.
Okay, so, so I hear from, from you saying more or less what I'm saying, that if it's anything to be major changes, then we shouldn't, then, then it should be represented.
I just want to point out one, um, one item. There is a spreadsheet that was included in our package that had a list of all the names, uh, of, of the votes.
No, no minutes, Adam. There's no minutes, not what was discussed, not, not who voted, said, that was not exactly signed.
Yeah, can I, can I speak up? This is Francine Tyfle speaking. I prepared that memorandum. And I just want to point out that there was included in there a, a summary, a certification by the two judges who were appointed by the condominium management, uh, committee to supervise the vote. We do have that full spreadsheet with all of the voters' names, but I made the judgment to protect the confidentiality of unit owners. If you would like to see that spreadsheet, and as long as I can feel comfortable it won't be widely circulated, I'd be happy to, to share it. But we have vote by vote by vote by vote, every single unit owner, whether they voted yes, whether they voted no, or whether they abstained. And the spreadsheet, uh, calculates the percentage in each column. And the judges saw that spreadsheet, the judges witnessed the entire vote, and you do have the judge's certification signed by two supervising judges who are members of the community and were there that night. You also have letters from the management committee, the management, uh, so the management company that supervised the vote personally, and you have a letter from Brian McIntyre, the attorney for the association, who's on this call with us tonight and can confirm everything that I've just said.
Yeah, we're, Chairman, we're starting to get into the merits of the applicant. Now, let me, I, I, this topic has, uh, I have, I'm sorry, it might be a little, anyway, I told you. Well, I appreciate your, are we going to hear it tonight or not? And then we can discuss with Mr. Natali's concerns, response for the other attorney. Mr. Natali has asked for these minutes for, for a few months. But in any event, Chairman, we have to decide first, are we going to hear the application or not?
So, so, I'm trying to hear what I, I see much language, wants to say something. Moish, go ahead.
I think this has gone far enough. There's a lot of things about this application that's not going to change. Uh, I'm ready to hear the, uh, finish this up tonight. Um, the main thing that I'm concerned about is going from fifty-five and older to rentals, and that's not going to change, no matter how many engineers you're going to bring. And, uh, I don't like this application, so I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Um, anyone else?
I agree with Moish.
Okay, so, any, any, anyone? If there is significant changes to this application, I think it's worth, uh, waiting to hear what the app says. It's a new application, have it come back, let's renotice and, and do another application. So basically, what you're saying is, let them, let them, uh, withdraw the application and start all over again. If there's significant changes to have, why not? Give them opportunity. So, so if there's significant changes to have, let me, let me tell you something. If there's significant changes to have, um, I think we can compromise and go for the vote, because if there's significant changes, he'll be able to bring in the application then later anyways.
Great.
It's the same, it's the same, what do you think, Adam?
Do you want me to, do you want me to go through the characterization of the changes with the board, so you could hear just where we're going?
Yeah. Uh, you know, I think, I think, I think majority of my fellow board members, um, want to get over this. But if you want to get sad about it, I don't know how far you're going to go with it.
Can we please, no, no, please don't start that.
Okay.
Hear it tonight or we're not. I mean, I don't think it's appropriate for Mr. Pfeffer, and due respect to Adam, to start talking about it. If we like what he hears, then we'll continue. And if not, then we'll say no. We either in for a dime or in for a dollar. Come on. Please. We have to keep some, some procedures here, and, and, uh, so that's what I suggest.
Sick.
All right. Agree with Jerry. It's seven forty, we haven't heard an application yet.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make this easy on everybody. At, at this time, the applicant would like to withdraw the application. Well, when we're ready, when we have his revised plans done, we'll submit them, we'll start the process, we'll go before the board. Um, the engineer will properly review it. If, if the board's not going to allow us to carry it, I'd rather than just go forward with a withdrawal, um, and then we'll come back to the board.
And they withdraw at this point?
I, I didn't hear you, Moish, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can you?
Yes, they can always withdraw the motion and start again. Yes, they can always do that.
Thank you, Jerry.
So if, if, if the boards aren't willing to, to, to carry it, uh, at this time, we would like to withdraw the application.
Do you accept the withdrawal?
Amy, are you there?
Yes.
I think Amy withdrew.
Hey, why withdraw the application? Do we need a motion, Jerry?
Yes, you need a motion to accept.
All right, so I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Kelly. Are we allowed to vote no on the acceptable? Or they have that right?
You have a right to vote yes or no, uh, Moish.
You can vote yes or no. I think they have a right to, but you can vote yes or no.
Okay. The motion's on the floor to attempt to withdraw the application. Mr. Kelly, can I get a second?
Second, Mike Ingber.
Moish Ingber, second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Kelly? Mr. Halverson?
No.
Mr. Langley?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Nafthali?
No.
Mr. Bibiak? Not here, I'm sorry. Mr. Ingber?
I accept the motion.
I am having major problems, too.
Oh, so that's a yes, then. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Okay.
Mr. Halverson?
What was the motion? I didn't, I was. Why, we made a motion to get you a new computer.
Motion was made to withdraw the application.
To withdraw the application? Okay.
I have to wait one minute, Jerry. I can only call seven, I have four minutes. So, I can't vote on this. Ingber, one of them is not going to vote.
You know what? You know what? Better yet, better yet, I'll disqualify from the vote because I wasn't sitting, I, I stepped away from my computer a minute.
Okay.
So it was four-three.
Four-three. Four, four, okay. What to withdraw, not to.
Thank you. We'll stick everybody at a later date.
Okay.
Okay. Right to the chair, I'm, I'm, I'm going to refuse myself. I'm leaving now.
Okay, fine. Thank you, have a good night.
Take care, Abram.
Take care.
Question?
Go ahead.
Are we getting new plans for this, or can we throw this out?
Well, throw it all out. He's got to start all over again.
He's starting over again. Throw it all out.
That's what the withdrawal is. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next application, four-one-five-four, has been carried, definitely. Uh, so we're up to four-one-three-four, Abram Takatski. It's nine fifty-one East County Line Road, block one-seventy-four-point-oh-four, lot fifty-eight, R fifteen zone. Site plan approval for the office building. Terry vote, the property is located in the R fifteen single-family residential zone. Commercial buildings are not a permitted use in this zone. Principal use variance relief was granted under resolution four-one-three-four. So review of the site plans, no bulk variances required.
Okay, who's here for Abram Takatski?
To Moish.
Miriam? Go ahead.
No, no, wait a minute, I'm sorry, that, Miriam.
It's not mine.
It's not hers, I don't know. Brian?
No, it is not mine.
Uh, I, I am here for it, Brian Flannery, and, uh, the, this applicant is an individual, so he doesn't need an attorney.
Okay. Go ahead, tell me what we're doing over here.
So the a- application is indicated as for the property on the north side of County Line Road, uh, just east of Somerset Avenue. Uh, it, it's a point-six-five acre site. We, we came for a, uh, bifurcated application for the use last year, which was granted. Uh, we're back here this evening with the site plan, uh, following the, uh, the, the requirements of the, uh, use variance that was granted. There were four conditions, uh, when it was granted, as indicated on Terry's letter on page two. Um, I, I think I got ahead of myself without Jerry making me swear to tell the truth, which I always do anyway.
Mr. Flannery, do you swear to tell the truth? I hope you got it.
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and planner. Uh, so the initial, uh, application was granted, had four conditions. One, to comply with the, uh, the RV letter, uh, November fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, which we had. Uh, two, there will be no basement allowed with the proposed construction, and no basement is, uh, requested. Uh, the applicant would provide more parking spaces than is required by the ordinance for this particular site, which is just under, uh, ten thousand square feet, under two stories. Uh, forty spaces would be, uh, required, and we're providing forty-seven. Uh, and then the typical comment with respect to the facade of the building, the, the stone and architectural, and, and we have submitted a, a plan showing a beautiful building that's proposed for the site. So the, the applicant has complied with the conditions of the.
Mr. Flannery, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I missed the first condition that you agreed to pl- include in this one. Could you say it again?
The applicant will comply with the plaque detail requirements of the November fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen RV letter.
Thank you.
So I have a question, Mr. Flannery. Is this being built on a slab or, or, or with a basement? I know you said there won't be anything in the basement, but is it being built on a slab, or is it still going to have a stone sort of basement there?
Um, let, let me, uh, confirm on the architectural plans.
I don't see.
Architectural plans were submitted.
When I see, when I see a facade of a building, I don't see on the, the, the building, um. I only see the elevations.
I see the first floor and second floor.
On the first floor plans, that the stairs only go up. So, uh, there, there is no basement.
There is no basement, so it's on a slab. Okay, that's fine.
Brian, does that mean it's on a slab? You agreed to put it on a slab? Thank you.
Okay, so we'll make the motion.
It would either be on a slab or on a crawl space. But no basement.
Crawl space means crawl space being slabbed. Same, same concept, same idea.
Same, same, same concept. No basement.
No basement, okay.
So the.
So basically, I don't see any variance that you're looking for on this site plan, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so then that's just, that's basically followed the, the, the use rate last time. Um, any board members have any issues with it? Excuse me?
I'm on the plan.
See you, Moish. Moish, your camera's too low for you.
Um, uh, Brian, I don't see where the garbage dump, the garbage is going to be, container can be picked up. There, there is a, uh, provision for a trash dumpster, uh, in the rear of the building.
Right here, Moish. I see it right here, Moish.
Oh, right, right by the first parking spot in the back?
Yeah.
Right, that, that little shaded box, that's the garbage dumpster.
Okay, very good, that's, yeah, okay, and, uh, UPS and those kind of things. Entrance to the buildings in the front or in the back?
The, the main entrance is in the back. But it also, it also has an entrance in the front for anybody that, uh, wants to walk to the space.
Okay, but the main entrance in the back, so if UPS comes, they have, how will they get there? FedEx, UPS, it's an office building, they're there multiple times a day.
And, and then, and those vehicles fit in the parking spaces that are provided, and we have forty-seven spaces where forty are required.
They're not going to park, they're going to just double park. I guess the handicap spots, is that what you provide for that?
That, that's what they usually do, and so that's what I would expect they would do. They can park under parking spaces where they can park, and they felt like parking, not in the handicap spot.
Okay, I just don't want them blocking the sides or the entrance, you know what I mean?
Yes, yes.
How wide is the driveway, um, on the right and on the left, going in and out?
How wide is the driveway?
Yeah.
Uh, it's twenty feet on both sides, on the radius.
Twenty feet, you said?
Yeah. Oh, you're, you're talking about the driveway going on the side of the building. I was giving you the entrance driveways. The, uh, the one-way driveways are sixteen feet wide.
That's enough for a big truck?
The, the big trucks go down the highway on, uh, ten and eleven-foot, uh, uh, laneways.
Okay, and there's no doors on the side of the building, only in the front and the back?
Uh, I.
That's what the plans look like, Moish. That's what I see on the plans.
Okay, with, um, very good. Is there a sidewalk on the, on the two sides of the building?
Around the whole building.
Sidewalk around the whole building.
Thank you very much.
Brian? I have a question. The, the, uh, Forty-Fifth Street parking. Where exactly would that be? What'd you ask? Hal, I didn't hear you. Forty-Fifth Street parking, where would that be?
It's in the rear of this building.
In the rear of the building.
Forty-seven off-street parking spaces.
Uh, who's, uh?
Jerry, somebody's washing dishes.
And all, all the technical items in the RVE report, we would comply with as part of resolution compliance if the board acts favorably. I can give you the, uh, master plan and municipal land use law with respect to the, uh, design variance. The, the design variance that we're requesting, uh, the two thousand and seven master plan, uh, on page seven, uh, indicates encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles such as a balanced mix of land uses, pedestrian-friendly and transit, transit-oriented environments. And, and if the board remembers when we came in initially, there's a shul here in proximity, and there will be a, uh, a, a relationship where they allow the shul to park in the, uh, uh, office parking spaces when, when the office is not in use. Uh, so this fits in with the neighborhood and complies with that provision. The, uh, the municipal land use law, NJAC forty-call fifty-five D two, under the purposes of the act, A is, and encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of development of all lands in the state, in a manner which will promote public health, safety, and, and general welfare. And it's my testimony as when we came in for the use variance that this. And it's my testimony as when we came in for the use variance that this.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead. One second, before you continue. Um, Jason, from the township, I see you have two open um, um, programs running. Can you shut one down? It's just eating up some of our bandwidth.
If you want, but if I do that and you ask me something, I can't jump on the mic on my main one.
Oh, so you need both open? Okay.
Yeah, it's no problem.
All right, fine, cuz, cuz it's, there's some low bandwidth and I can't keep, you know.
That's each individual person. Like, Brian's got that because her internet's not good where her house is, and anybody who has that up there, that's their individual internet, not the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jason. Okay, go ahead. Who wanted to say something before?
Myshe Ingber.
Myshe, go ahead.
So I'd like to talk about lighting for a minute. We, this, this, this is a very heavy residential neighborhood, and if, what type of lighting is gonna be used? And is it gonna be um, mounted in a way where it doesn't disrupt or interfere with the neighbors? Like, is it gonna be shielded, or is it gonna be?
We, we, we would, yes, we, we're proposing shielded lights, and as part of resolution compliance, we will uh, have to demonstrate that the lighting, uh, which is in a residential area, complies with the residential lighting standards and the, and with respect to uh, shielding the lights and any uh, a- any intensity of the lighting.
So, so if, if, all right, I, I just, I want that to be very strong, that whatever type of lighting they're gonna put on the side of the building, or if you're gonna put poles back there, that it one hundred percent should stay, the light rays should stay on this property and not interfere with other people's backstories.
Yes, and, and section eight hundred of the ordinance has uh, standards specific to lighting uh, adjacent to residential uh, uses, and, and the applicant is indicating that we would comply with those standards uh, and, and, and any uh, uh, other lighting requirements that your board engineer stipulates.
Okay.
Excuse me, Chairman.
Okay.
This is Terry.
Yes, Terry.
Yeah, just wanna point out to the board, uh, if you look at our review, page nine, uh, under lighting, comment seven, notes on the lighting plan indicate that lights will be operated by a timer uh, so that they deactivate in off-hours. They're not gonna be on all night. And that shielding from neighborhood properties is proposed.
Did they submit a plan yet?
Yes, they've submitted a plan, and we will verify that it's adequate uh, during compliance if board approval is granted.
All right, I definitely don't want light, like, light pollution. Is that what they call it? Light pollution on the other properties? I, I feel like.
Right.
Completely understood. Uh, they'll have to go to some kind of shielding or shoebox lighting uh, to make sure that you don't have any direct glare.
Correct. I mean, they're, they really do back up to residential, we're put, we're letting them put a whole, you know, parking lot back there, so I wanna be sensitive to the neighbors. Also, the runoff, I, I don't want that, this is, this is a big parking lot that basically takes up the entire property. I don't understand, there's gonna be, is there an underground?
There's an underground drainage room, which was submitted, we're required to uh, attenuate peak flows and, and have reductions, and we will comply with all those requirements. The, it's been submitted, and as part of resolution compliance, R V E will make sure that it does comply with all the standards.
Is there gonna be curbing back in the back uh, parking lot?
Yes, the entire parking lot is curved. It, all the, all the runoff from the pavement will be, will be captured and go into an underground system where it's managed and, and released at rates lower than the pre- the existing condition.
Does, does, does the developer or builder or owner agree that if they disrupt or anybody has a budding due to the site, that they will correct it?
Or the, the uh, a- anybody that uh, develops a property uh, has a responsibility to not have an adverse impact on the neighbors, so I, I guess the answer to that is yes, but it's a requirement for all developers.
Right, and you're not asking for a sidewalk raver, right? Now, here, we have a new sidewalk, and a new reflection in the sidewalk.
That, that is correct.
Okay.
I have a question on the lighting. I don't know if you mentioned it or not. Um, are we gonna have some type of board-on-board fence so the headlights of cars won't shine into the neighbors, the yard?
We, 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 we're proposing fencing along the property line to buffer the uh, uh, and, and provide that separation that you're asking for.
Okay, so it'll, it'll shield all the lighting into the neighbor's yard, okay? Next.
Is that gonna be six foot, Mr.?
Six foot high.
Um, on page, on, on, on the, on page um, four of fourteen, um, Terry, I see that there's a, uh, in the parking lot, is a big drainage easement, an underground drainage easement. Did you study that, and is that gonna work, or, or how's that gonna affect the parking at all? Terry?
I'm sorry, Chairman, which uh, section are you referring to?
I'm looking at page four of fourteen of the, of the um, plan, the site plan. And I see that there's a whole drainage easement under the parking lot.
You're talking about site plan sheet or my review?
No, site plan sheet.
Okay, all right. Hang on a second. All right, you're looking about the utility and drainage plan, is that correct?
Yes. If you look in the parking lot, you see that big underground drainage easement back there?
Okay, I don't see the easement, but I see the outline of the underground drainage system.
Yeah, the underground drainage system, right underneath the parking lot, right? And your, and your professional opinion, is that gonna work, or is it gonna flood out from all the, from all the inlets?
We're going to look at the final design during compliance, if board approval is granted. Uh, as Brian referred a few minutes ago, uh, this project is what's known as major development as defined by the NJDEP. As a result of that, they have to comply with what is known as the New Jersey stormwater rule, uh, which means that they have to size this system to reduce the flow rates of the two uh, ten and one hundred year stores. They also have to, they have to publish and file a stormwater maintenance plan in accordance with the stormwater rule, which guarantees that they properly maintain the system after it's installed.
Okay, you know, so you're gonna, who, who has their mic on, or something on, cuz I hear echoing back there?
It might be me, Chairman. I'm gonna turn it back off if you have any questions.
Okay. No, so I just wanted to make sure that you're gonna look at it and make sure that it works, cuz the worst thing that we want to happen is, we wanna see that that underground system is gonna fail, um, um, and, and there's no way to get into it to, to repair it or clean it.
One of the things that we typically look at during compliance, especially if it's on a ground system, we'll make them install ports and access manholes so they can maintain. Um, the applicant is gonna have an incentive to maintain the system, because the way this is designed with the perimeter curbing, if that system fails and backs up, it's gonna flood his parking lot.
Right, and that's what I'm working about. This, I, I know that, I see that, and that's exactly what I'm working about. I wanna make sure that that works. It's not just gonna flood his parking lot, the front inlet, right in front of the building, um, is gonna flood Cantilean Road.
Most of that is actually gonna catch in the parking lot itself if we were to back up, but I understand your concern. They have to design per the state stormwater standards, and that's something that we check during site plan compliance.
Fine, okay.
I agree with the Chairman. I think this site is, is, is unique because I, I, ninety-seven percent of it is gonna be, is gonna be impervious coverage. They're, they're really filling up almost every inch of the site with a building and with blacktop. So this is an important site to pay attention to when it comes to stormwater.
It's gonna have to be a conservative system. I agree.
Yeah.
Jerry, um, Terry, can you, can you please make sure that it's a conservative system for, for the sake of, of, of it? Just to make sure.
Yes, sir, that's what we do.
You know, go, go a little out of your way and make sure, um, we don't, we don't want it over, overflowing, overflowing into the streets. You know, if the parking lot gets flooded, it's his problem. If the street gets flooded, it's our problem.
You can listen to the lines, vague detailed engineering stormwater reviews, trust me.
Okay. Okay, Jerry, what'd you wanna say? I can't hear you. Turn on your mic, Jerry.
Don't forget, this will be on a two-year maintenance bond, so after it's, after it's been approved and inspected, so we got two years to make sure about the flooding issue, uh, uh, for nothing else, so.
Okay. Fine, you got it. Okay, um, Franny, can you please um, um, advertise our email address if somebody has any comments? They should just email us quickly.
Zoningboardcomments@lakewoodnj.gov. J O K.
And, and whoever's listening to this right now, that's the same um, email address for all the applications for tonight's hearing. Okay, um, Franny, did we get any letters on this?
No, I have nothing.
We didn't get any letters on it? Okay, fine. So, uh, final question, board members, do you have any, any further comments? If not, let's go for a motion.
Can I just?
One minute, one minute, one minute, Myshe. Um, Franny, what are you saying?
I didn't say anything.
Myshe Ingber said, last, last time we spoke about the pending lawsuit on County Line that was um, banned, you know, these type of buildings in that area. Just to, to, I guess, to Flannery, to Brian, any update on that?
Well, the lawsuit really didn't ban this. There, there was a lawsuit that the notice wasn't proper. Uh, and, and the appropriate time based on the use at that was at the time when we did the use variance. So uh, there's no change that I know of with respect to the ordinance uh, with relation to this, but the, the board in, in last year granted this use for this particular piece of property, and we're, we're back in accordance with that. But it, it's really, it's really not uh, indicating uh, accurately that they were banning these uses. It's that the governing body said these uses should be in there. There was an objection based on notice, uh, and, and there was a judge that, based on that objection, uh, ruled uh, that, that the notice was inappropriate. There was an appeal on that uh, that ruling, uh, and, and I don't think there's been anything formally done since that time.
It's not been resolved.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Chairman, ready to make a motion?
Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve with the conditions that if Jerry can go through them, just to make sure we got everything.
You want me to go through them now, Myshe? All right, I got them all.
Thank you, Jerry.
Most important, most important, it should be built on a slab.
Correct. It's amazing one. Abe, there's a motion on the floor.
Okay, and it was, the motion was made by Myshe Langry. Can I have a second? Okay, yes. Can I have a second? I'll second. Who is that?
Mr. Galli, Mr. Galli.
Mr. Galli, a second. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Galli?
Yes.
Mr. Haferson?
Yes.
Mr. Langry?
Mr. Langry?
He's saying yes.
He's saying yes? Well, he made the motion. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Ingber?
Yes.
Or Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Mr. Haferson, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Okay. Um, okay. Good night and good luck. Thank you so much. What's our next application?
Somerset, appeal number four one three nine A, Somerset and H L L C.
And which application, who has this application? Is that you, Mrs. Weinstein?
This one's mine. Yes, this one is mine.
Okay.
Okay, now I think she has other people she's trying to get on here. Uh, in the meantime, from Terry vote, the applicant previously received variance.
One second, please. Before we continue, who's Ralph that's listening into this app, this is, um, hearing?
It's the Somerset they're going on.
And S B?
I think, I think they're trying to figure out how to get on.
I see a Ralph and an S B on here. Who is that?
Oh, Ralph is on?
On.
I see Ralph on there. Okay.
Okay, Day, I think David Schreiber is trying to get on. I just emailed him how, how to try to get on. S B is the next application.
S B, the next application.
S B is forty, is forty-one forty-eight A.
Okay, that's the next application. Okay, fine.
Forty-one thirty-nine A.
Okay, so if that's the case, if he doesn't want on his application, can I please disconnect? It's just taking up bandwidth. I need you to disconnect. Thank you. Please come back on at the next, at the next application.
Hey, one minute, one minute. We're, forty-one thirty-nine A, Somerset is the next application.
No, he's, he's talking about the S B who's on. He's forty-one forty-eight A. He's asking him, Franny, jump off and hop back on.
Yeah, I, I just need him to get on.
Washington management, please log off. Is that what you want?
That's what he wants, and I'm gonna, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we ready?
Okay, yes.
The applicant previously received the use variance approval to construct up to thirty duplexes, sixty residential units on a cul-de-sac with a fifty-foot wide right-of-way throughout the property under appeal number four one three nine. Appeal four one three nine also included approval for a playground property, optional additional parking, a smaller property for a synagogue and rabbi's residence, and a secondary access. Optional additional parking and synagogue and rabbi's residence are no longer proposed with this major subdivision.
What's no longer proposed in this major subdivision?
Uh, it looks like a synagogue and a rabbi's residence.
Why no synagogue? Okay, we'll hear the application in a minute.
Okay.
Are we ready?
I am ready.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Miriam Weinstein on behalf of the applicant, Somerset and H L L C. As I'm sure the board recalls, and as Fran just indicated, um, the board granted the applicant use variance approval to construct up to sixty duplex units in thirty buildings in a bifurcated approval received at the end of last year. We are now here for preliminary and final subdivision approval in accordance with said approval. The site plan approval calls for a total of sixty-two lots. I'm actually, it's not a site plan, it's really a subdivision approval, calls for a total of sixty-two lots. Sixty will contain duplex units on zero-lot line properties, so the thirty units that were discussed in the, that were, that were, that were a- approved as per the use variance approval, one lot for playground and one for an above-ground drainage basin. Um, with that, I would like to ask that Brian Flannery sworn.
I wasn't muted. I'm sorry. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth to help you God?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. Uh, as, as the application in, is indicating, this is a ten-acre site with frontage on New Hampshire Avenue. Uh, we received the uh, bifurcated use approval uh, last year. We're back here with an application uh, in, in accordance with that approval. The uh, property has a, a boulevard that comes all the way in with a park at the end of it, uh, and we have an interconnection to the previously approved uh, site uh, that uh, provides a connection to Route seventy. The, the connector road will benefit both the uh, prior approval and this approval, and, and that it'll provide some traffic options uh, that would not be available without that. So looking at uh, Terry's report, uh, under zoning and waivers, uh, it has indicated the property's in the B five zone, uh, and, and it was approved to allow up to sixty uh, duplex units, which we provided. Uh, and uh, there's no variance relief that's required. Uh, the report uh, goes on to indicate with respect to the secondary access, uh, this will be a public right-of-way that'll continue out to uh, the, to the, through the other development, providing access to Route seventy. I, I don't think there was anything saying in the report that really uh, required uh, any testimony. Uh, Terry indicates on page eight, the uh, traffic study was submitted, and the traffic study indicated levels of service for the um, uh, proposed site access of, of B and C. Um, and uh, there's uh, the, the relief that was needed in order to uh, to develop this site was, was granted last year. Uh, I, I could give you master plan reasoning and uh, and, and the municipal land use law, but since we're not requesting any relief, uh, I, I, I will refrain from doing that unless the board wants to hear it.
Question, Chairman?
Go ahead.
Does the applicant agree if they receive approval that they comply with all the technical requirements in our review?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so now. Okay, so now.
Mr. Flannery, I noticed you said there were no variances, and yet Terry's letter references major subdivision and bulk variances. Terry, is that what we have on that?
The relief was previously granted.
Okay, so there's no new variances being requested?
That's correct.
Okay, so, if you could help me out over here for a minute. In between lot 8.29, what is that exactly? Is that a roadway going out into the secondary street over there on Cedar Court?
I believe that's the secondary access that we are talking about, Chairman.
Yes.
Okay, so, and why is that? And whoever designed this, why exactly did you put a secondary access so close to the front of, of, what is that? Was that a street over there on River Avenue? Why didn't you just put it in the middle of it, so your people can just get in and out of the area?
I believe that's part of another development. Is that correct, Brian?
That is correct. And, and the secondary access is probably 2/3 of the way to the back, and we really had no choice on where to put that, because that's where the other development had the availability to punch through. And my personal testimony would be that's an appropriate location for it, because I don't think you would want it too close to the front or too close to the end. I think it's, it worked out.
You just said the magic word, it's too close to the front. I think this is too close to the front. You know, if you can put it somewhere in the middle or towards the back, it'll leave traffic going in and out.
Mr. Chairman, which, which plan are you looking at that you think is too close to the?
I'm looking at this engineering plan right over here. What am I holding over here? Preliminary and final major subdivision, block 43, lot 8. 29, dated 6/29/20. Sheet 1 of 1.
I think I'm looking at the wrong plan, Mr. Chairman.
What are the wrong plans?
Yeah, this is block 1248, lot 1.
Oh, this is William Street, sorry.
I was wondering what he was talking about with River Avenue.
I saw it, something doesn't make sense what you guys are talking about.
Yeah, River Avenue didn't make too much sense.
These plans, Chairman, referenced JCM Bootleman. Do you look at the territory sheets?
I gotta find it. Oh my God, okay. And you guys answered so nicely that, yes, it's a secondary entranceway. I love it, you know?
Well, that's true. That's true.
You know? Hold on a minute.
Chairman, while you're waiting, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
They said, this is a bifurcated application that we gave a previous approval.
Yes.
Right? We gave a previous approval with 7-foot side yard setbacks?
Yes.
We did?
Was that with 7-foot side, or we said, or we didn't? We probably didn't give any numbers. We said, let's see how it fits in.
Almost never give a side yard. That sounds like a planning board application. We do that, or a planning board.
The side setbacks that are proposed are consistent with duplex development.
Chairman, do you remember the last time we did a 7-yard, 7-foot setback?
Very seldom, but okay, we always talk about, we always try it. But what does, what does the minute say? What is the?
The minutes only had the unit count. The minutes said up to 60 units.
Up to 60 units. It didn't say side yard setbacks, it says up to 60 units.
And this is a, this is a ratables. This is in a B5 zone, right? And putting housing in a B5 zone?
It was, let me tell you the history on this, Moish. Moish, this had wanted approval for housing about 10, 15 years ago.
Correct.
Which was 15, which was a whole bunch of singles, doubles, and townhouses back in the day. So, they went ahead and they brought it in to modify it for a duplex units. But at that time, I'm sure we did not tell them how big the lots have to be and how many units we're gonna give them. Probably told them up to, but no more than. And now they had to squeeze it in, so they upped the 7-foot side yard setbacks.
You're saying so they hadn't, you know, because this doesn't look like something we usually approve.
Mr. Langkry, the Chairman is correct. There was a previous approval on this, calling for, I think, townhouses and some singles. I don't remember the exact unit count, Brian, do you?
I don't remember either.
Do you remember the unit count of the previous?
I don't remember the unit count of the previous.
I mean, probably I could call my applicant, call a member of the applicant if you want to know the number of units on the previous approval. I believe this was fewer units, and they're duplexes, and that's why the board had agreed to grant up to the 60 units.
And the other thing that we should indicate is that the adjoining property to the north has an approval for residential development. It has a commercial component along Route 70. This particular property has very limited access on New Hampshire Avenue, so as far as getting a ratable here, the availability to get a ratable wasn't consistent with this. The B5 zone does allow residential development under certain conditional uses, and we're adjoining a B5A zone, which also allows duplexes. So, we did this testimony back last year when the board acted favorably on the application, that this is an appropriate project for fitting in here. We provided a park down the end to buffer the neighbors to the east, and we provided all that testimony. Unfortunately, due to COVID, it took us this long to get back. Otherwise, I think the board members would have remembered that application, and we wouldn't be rehashing those items of it. Also, with respect to the side setbacks, HC is what's shown for the units, and it should be stated that for a duplex, which would be approved in the adjoining property, the side setbacks for duplexes are 7 feet. The logic has always been that we need at least 5 feet open on each side so that there's adequate access, and we would agree to it.
Excuse me, Brian, Brian, Brian. We didn't, we never said we should allow you 5 feet on each side.
No, what I'm saying is, in the past, the zoning board and the planning board, and it's based on input from the township as far as emergency access to the rear yard, is that 5-foot free strip to the back is something that is appropriate, and it can indicate that we would.
I wouldn't call it appropriate. It's something that we would, that we look at on a case-by-case basis.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes.
I have a copy of the use variance resolution.
There's some noise, good background noise. Okay, go ahead, Jerry.
Terry.
Terry, I'm in.
I have a copy of Resolution 4088 with me.
Yes, go ahead.
I can read the statement of facts at the beginning of the resolution.
Okay, go ahead.
It says, whereas the purpose of the application is to seek use variance approval to construct up to 30 duplexes, 60 residential units on what is depicted as a 30-foot, 32-foot-wide cul-de-sac throughout the property. On the east side of the property, immediately west of Leisure Village, a playground property and buffer landscaping are depicted on various. On the western side of the property, near the New Hampshire Avenue access, a synagogue and rabbi's residence and optional additional parking are depicted. Whereas the property is located on the east side of New Hampshire Avenue, several hundred feet south of its intersection with Route 70, all properties will be accessed from the proposed cul-de-sac named Golden Bootleman Way, whereas the subject property as planned will provide an entrance and exit solely on Route 70. There's nothing in here in terms of bulk requirements.
I didn't think there would be.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery? Just a moment. Mr. Flannery?
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, you know what? That was an earlier resolution. I may have read from the wrong resolution.
That was.
I had to pack it together.
Mr. Flannery, can you hear me, sir?
I still hear you.
There's a lot of background noise, I can't hear anything.
On page 5 of Terry's Report Number 8, it says that you haven't shown the decks, and the decks may, you know, impact on the rear setback requirement. Can you talk to us about that?
We're not.
Can I answer the question for you? Can I answer the question for you, Terry? They're not showing any decks. They're gonna put them up, and they're gonna come crying to us that we need a deck for a sukkah to please approve it.
We would never do that. We've learned our lesson.
Please.
I'm not doing that.
No.
If I, if I could answer that question, the decks are not shown on the plans, but there is room for the decks. The applicant is indicating that there will be decks, and they will comply with the setbacks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Question for Jerry?
Wait a minute. Brian, can I ask how big those decks are gonna be?
It looked like there's about 12 feet from the back of the units to the setback lines, and we would comply with whatever the, that depth is. The decks will not go over the setback lines.
Okay, so then, so then, so then, and there's a 2-foot hangover off the roof? So, that means that the sukkah is only gonna be 10 feet, therefore we wanna go add another 5, 10 feet out. I know this, I know the game how it plays, but it's okay.
No, because now they're all coming in to make the decks bigger, and they're all can't go in the setback, so they can only make them wider, and it's not big enough for 2 beds, and I have an entire development that is doing the same thing with the decks.
Can I ask Jerry a question?
Yeah.
Ready for me, Jerry?
Can you put your phone on, on, on mute? Who else doesn't have it on mute? Moish Inger?
Yeah, I can put it on mute.
Please do, let's see if you're the one. Ah, okay, you're the culprit. Now you're one.
Nope, it's bad.
Franny, are you in the kitchen?
I'm gonna tattle on Hal Halverson, his is not on.
Oh.
Right, it's David Schreiber. You can see if it's a blue outline around that picture, if who it is.
David Schreiber, I think.
David Schreiber.
He's got a blue outline, but he's got 2.
David has 2 of them.
Right, the one without the picture seems to have the blue, aren't out anymore.
No, the one, the one that's blue around that, turn that off, David.
Turn off the other one. Right. Oh wait, now he has 3.
Where's David now? There he is. He's off. David was not.
There he is. But he still has the one in blue.
He still have the one, he still have one on.
Right, the one without the picture.
Right. Okay. All right, let's try to continue. Go ahead. Who was speaking before?
I thought when we left off, Moish Langkry had a question or something.
Yes. Can you hear me? Testing 1, 2.
Yes.
Okay, all right, Jerry, this is obviously a bifurcated application. Give me some direction of what we're voting on, and did we agree to a number? What did we agree to? And what we allowed to change, and what are we voting on?
You previously granted an up to 60 duplex unit approval. Up to 60 units. This is a 62-lot subdivision. One lot is going to be for recreation, and the other's the drainage. But they're proposing up to what you gave them, the rate, up to 60 units. 30 buildings, 60 duplexes. I'm sorry?
Okay. So, if I don't like something about the side yard setbacks, or a house in the front, or?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Everything's, everything's on the table, is that correct?
You were correct.
Yes.
All right, so, number 1, I'm a little blushing by the size of this project. I'll be honest with you. This looks like a lot in this. Number 1, first thing is, the first unit is all the way on the street practically, looks like it's, it's really close. Second thing, I don't remember the last time we gave 7-foot side yard setbacks. That bothers me a lot, you know, at least the side yards. These are big units, 1,500 square foot footprints. If I'm understanding correctly, that means at least 3,000, and if it's an attic, that's another 1,000 square feet, or 700 square feet, and if a basement, there's another 1,500 square feet. This is a lot crammed into a little space on a very busy street. I have a problem with this, with this project. You went, if we set up to 60 units, I think you did the maximum you can fit into this glove. Even OJ couldn't fit his hand in there. So, I think it needs a little revision. That's my opinion.
I have, I have another couple of questions on that thought, okay? Why was the rabbi's residence removed? And why was the synagogue, not the rabbi's residence as much as the synagogue? When we, when we spoke about it last time, we said that there will be a synagogue here.
There was to be a synagogue in a basement unit. We can put that back in if the board wants it.
Was that, was that what was discussed then, a synagogue in a basement unit? Or was it a regular synagogue to service the community so they didn't have to come out onto a, onto a heavy street of New Hampshire Avenue and cross over and go find themselves a place to go for services?
If you recall, the board wanted us to connect to the adjoining subdivision. The adjoining subdivision is doing a big full synagogue, and that's when this applicant discussed with that applicant, the connecting road, they also discussed that they would contribute to that synagogue. So, therefore, the synagogue, which was not required by the ordinance and is not needed by this application, as we indicated. All of the issues that the board is discussing, the 7-foot side yards, we indicated 7-foot side yard in accordance with the Lakewood UDO requirements for duplexes. It's typically 7, but we've shown 8-foot side yards, so.
I was gonna ask you that. I was, I was gonna ask you, Brian, that I see on the, on the plan, when you depict the side yard setbacks, you depict 8 feet, but on the envelope, you write 7 feet. Which is the correct one? Is it 7 or 8? I look at it across the board on page, Moish, Moish?
Yes.
Go to page, go to page 20. Of the site plan. Are you there, Moish?
Yes, I'm looking at the map.
So, look at, look at any lot, and see where it says 8 feet from the side yards? And then it's written on the side, 7, 7-foot side yards?
That's where I got the 7 from.
What is it? Is it 7 or is it 8?
Well, the, as I indicated, when New Lines designed the plans, they showed 7 feet, which is a typical side yard setback. The buildings that are proposed are 8, so we're certainly, we're not asking for 7. If the board doesn't want us to have 7, we're happy to have 8.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, what we discussed at the last meeting was that we were gonna follow the standards of the R75 zone, which is what this is following.
It's 7 and 1/2 feet.
Okay, so we'll give you 7 and 1/2.
You'll leave a statement for this. My question is now, why, what's gonna happen to a community building or some sort of, or some sort of synagogue? This is too much, this is 60 units over here, people walking through. Do we know for sure that the neighbors next door won't, won't give this project a hard time, like in other communities? Where 2 communities, one emerging to one synagogue, which adjacent each other, that is no room because of our kids? We need, need a bigger synagogue. It's not big enough, build your own, and then we have a whole argument breaking out between, between 2 communities? And then there is court hearings and rabbinic reports and a lot of other fun stuff, so.
Chairman, can I, can I call Ralph Zucker on behalf of the applicant, who has a witness, to address these concerns?
Yes, but before you go there, let me just agree with the Chairman. There's no way that we're building this project, and we, if we said synagogue, it didn't mean a basement that can hold 20 people.
Let, let, let me call, let me call Mr. Zucker. Let's have him, let's have him affirmed, and then we'll ask him the questions. Okay, Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to see.
He's on. Ralph, can you take off the mute?
I unmuted.
He's unmuted. Can you have him affirmed?
Jerry, you wanna?
Jerry, you have to unmute. Um, Jerry, you need to turn off mute.
You're on mute, Jerry.
Yes?
I'm sorry, is he only? I'm sorry, is he only on the phone and not on video?
I'm on video.
Would you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the whole truth, so I hope we got?
I do.
Okay, bye.
So, um, I think I've appeared before this board many times, you know me. As far as the synagogue, we, this is an old application. I don't have the exact amount of units in front of me, we have Nick Raviano on, who could later on tell you how many units we went down from, from the original application. The bottom line is that we cleaned up an existing residential approval. To come in with what the board agreed at a last time was a much cleaner use, going away from singles and towns and a whole mishmash of stuff, coming with something clean. But the most, the main thing that the board wanted was a connection between this property and the neighboring property that's between us and Route 70, which is what Brian showed you earlier. And when we did that, and we spoke to the neighboring property owner, he expressed a desire that we not build a shul, because he's building a bigger shul and wanted to have the support of the full community. We have no problem putting the shul if necessary, and we can agree to that here, whether it's a basement shul or a full shul, we don't have a problem with that. But this was done, we needed the cooperation of the neighboring property owner between us and Route 70 to connect, and it actually made his plan much better because that was an approval that only had a right-in, right-out on Route 70 and had no access at all across to Locust, across New Hampshire. This gave everybody access in and out, much better access. That's really what we thought the board was going to focus on today, was simply come in, we brought in, as requested, that connectivity, and everything else was already discussed before. But the shul issue came up, was removed simply at the request of the neighboring property owner because they are building a bigger shul and wanted to have it as one community. And we got access from them and that clear. So, again, maybe we could stipulate that if we're not able to make a deal with the neighboring property owner to have a large enough shul, we would put it in as a condition of approval, we don't have a problem with that. But that's the story why it was removed.
Ralph, let me just tell you, last time when we heard this application, we told you to put in another access, wasn't really help the neighboring property. It was more or less to give you another access out because we felt that one entranceway onto New Hampshire Avenue wasn't sufficient for a project like this. So we wanted another access way, not just an emergency access, we wanted another access, if you read the minutes, you'll see, so that people can get in and get out, and that's what we were told we're gonna have. Not just a regular emergency access.
Talk to that, I think you do have a full access, Brian.
In accordance with the comment in Terry's report, we're making that a full access. So the thing about the emergency access will be removed, it's a... And that is the agreement with the neighbor.
I just wanted to clear that up.
Yes.
We felt, yes.
So we're all clear on that.
It came about because we felt that without an emergency access or something, in case of an emergency, I'm sorry, in case of an emergency on a 50-foot wide cartway, if there's a fire, God's a bit older in the back, and cars parked on the street, we're gonna have a big problem, and that's why we requested another entranceway and another accessway into this project so that they can get in and out. But if you tell me now that it's not just an emergency access, it's a regular cartway and it's a regular street, I'm pleased with that. However...
It just makes both of the projects, I agree with what you said, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, it wasn't for that project. But when we looked at our alternatives, whether to go connect through there or to go down to the existing paper streets, this is a much better solution because the neighboring property did have a problem of only right-in, right-out onto Route 70, and this gives them much, much better access. It just makes it a much more livable community. And that's where the conversation of the shul came out, so just give me the chronology, and we'll do whatever the board wants.
Right, now, so help me out, Ralph. Goldman Street is gonna be available for the neighboring project also to go in and out onto New Hampshire Avenue? Because they're gonna pick up on this other street that goes through their project?
I'll let Brian, and we have Scott Kettle here, but Brian, wanna talk about that?
Yeah, the answer is yes, it is available to the other community.
Okay. And how many units are in the other community? And is it gonna be too much for this intersection right now on New Hampshire Avenue?
That's a better question for Scott to answer, he submitted a report which indicated the level of service, and the answer in the report is yes. But if I answer all of Scott's questions, then he came onto the meeting for no reason.
So I'll get to Scott in a minute, I'm coming back to the shul, okay? I have no idea at this point, and I don't know if my fellow board members will agree or disagree with me, but I have no idea at this point what size shul the neighboring project is putting up. I have no idea if there'll be room for enough members to join in into the neighboring project shul. I would like to see what they're doing to feel comfortable that we don't need a shul on this side.
Mr. Chair, why don't we have a copy of the adjacent project as well? So we can kinda take a look at it and see how it ties to this.
Because I know, unfortunately, I know that there's a lot of stories in town where adjacent projects, where they're supposed to share shuls, and that particular developer built a shul just barely enough for his own community, and now if you have to move them together, it becomes a hassle, and everyone starts fighting all over the place.
And those circumstances occur when there's a shul already constructed and the second development comes in. This is two projects that the shul is not constructed, and the applicant on the other property, who I represented, indicated that he's gonna make his shul bigger to accommodate the entire community, and they thought that would be a better solution. As Ralph indicates, if a shul is needed, if that doesn't fall apart, one of the units would have to be converted to a shul because it is a permitted use in every zone. As part of resolution compliance, we could provide the documentation to the board engineer to indicate the accommodations that have been made. So that, and the real person that would suffer if there's not a shul in the area is the developer of the property, because he won't sell the units. So it's in his best interest, it's in the board's best interest, and everybody's best interest. So we would agree as resolution compliance to document that there's availability for the shul access on the adjoining lot, and if there's not, we wouldn't convert one of the units to a shul.
Okay, so here's my issue, you're gonna sell all these units, we're truly gonna convert when everyone lives in there. And then you find out that you can't move in.
We'll do it before we pull any permits, we'll either demonstrate or we'll do it before we pull any permits. We could do it as a condition of resolution compliance, not later on. I think our reputation is good enough with this board, we've built enough shuls in town, we're not about to sully it now.
Ralph, I know that, but as the chairman of the board, I need to put it on the record.
We're willing to, we offered that, and we'll do it before. Part of resolution compliance, if we don't have it done, then one of the units will be a shul unit before.
What about Ralph?
Wait, wait, let me finish my last statement, unless you tell me, Ralph, that this is being sold to a Hasidic sect, both of them together to the same Hasidic sect, then I'll feel a little bit more comfortable, because I know that they're all used to use one shul. But if you tell me this is gonna be sold to the general public, litrush, svartim, askenazim, charedim, ain't gonna work.
I have no idea, so therefore, we'll have to either make the accommodation or we'll have to build the shul.
Okay, so how are we gonna go about it to see if the shul fits for this project, then?
We would have to, the onus would be on us to show an agreement with the neighboring property owner, the shul sufficient size to accommodate to the board's satisfaction, or I guess it's the board's engineer's satisfaction. We've accommodated both, if not, then before we pull any permits, we have to designate one of the units as a shul.
Basement shul.
Not a basement shul.
Okay. So you have no issue if somebody is gonna make a motion to that effect? That you cannot get a building permit until you demonstrate that the shul is gonna work?
Correct, well, either we'll build a shul, at the maximum requirement would be to take one unit and convert it into a shul. I can't demonstrate the shul's gonna get along, and you know, that's a little tougher these days. At the very least, we will build, the onus is on us, the applicant, as part of our resolution compliance, to either provide the shul or demonstrate to your, I guess Terry Vought or whoever's satisfaction, and if he's an expert in shuls, by now probably are,
Ralph.
That we've made arrangement with the neighboring property owner to accommodate us as well, because that's what he wanted, but we're willing to take that risk.
Okay, so Terry, I have a question for you. And Jerry, both of you. If this application was to be approved tonight, right? Can we put into the motion that they have to come back at times and show us where the shul is, if it works or not? Because I think board members have a better feel on what the shul works or what shul doesn't work versus our token goy.
We would hate that to come back to the board.
I don't take that personally, Chairman. What?
I don't take it personally.
I know, I know you would.
Chairman, I think it's...
Guys, I hear some background noise again.
I don't think, believe that decision of the two Gentiles. So, I think that it seems to me that this is something that should be resolved, presumably could be resolved now, I mean, not tonight, but certainly the applicant can go to the adjoining property now and come back to us in a month or now.
I'm uncomfortable waiting for somebody else's testimony to say if the shul is good or not. I see an application which is overstuffed, and it needs a synagogue with parking, and I gotta see a synagogue on this property, gonna get me a little paper that says we agreed to share, it never works, Abe, you know it doesn't work. I'm not working, that's not something that I could agree to. As being a non-Gentile, sorry, Jerry, I don't think it could work. The second point I wanna make is, when you said one unit, you're talking about 1,500 square foot shul for 60 people plus basements? That's, Terry, how many people can fit in a 1,500 square foot?
That is helping for Mr. Sakamata to answer.
I don't think, a 1,500 square foot is maybe 25 people, 30 people?
Chairman, can we take a break for five minutes, please, sir? Can we take a, I need to take a break.
Go ahead, all right. We will be back in five minutes, guys.
Don't ask that question, these days, you're gonna need that whole site, just for social distancing, you're gonna need the whole site.
All right, guys, we'll bring COVID into this.
We had to.
Guys, we'll be back in 10 minutes.
10 minutes or five?
Whatever you like.
No, they carried. They carried it.
Again?
Oh, Covington? Yep. No, Covington, they withdrew the application, they're gonna come back.
You watch? Means over?
No, they're taking a break.
They just split through? There's maybe a lot of people who wanted to protest. Didn't say what, huh? You didn't see that coming?
Not until tonight, no.
[Inaudible]
Jerry? They might not come back.
Yes, I'm here, yes, does somebody call me, or Hal?
Yeah, they might not come back.
Moish went to get pizza.
That's good. That's good.
That's okay, give me a chance to watch the giant game.
Okay, and how was that going?
We're losing. Playing good. Sixteen ten. Town eleven, anybody wants to check it out? Right now they're halftime.
Halftime, alright.
Monday night football.
Where are they playing?
Uh, Pittsburgh.
Oh.
No, they're in New York, not New Jersey.
Oh, New Jersey? I can't, I, no.
You can't tell from the fan side.
You can't tell anymore.
At least they're still not the name of the team.
Just gonna start again. Hey, you ready to go?
I'm ready to go.
Everybody there?
We're ready to roll?
Ready.
March, you there Mosh? Hey, through the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, going back to this application, uh, I remember the, the other one that was put out was just as large and just as dense. A few years ago, this is still a lot of density in here, um, now we're in twenty twenty and there's a lot been built in that area. Um, off of Locust Street, which comes right in connection with that whole street area. I think two streets, uh, two edges basically, and that area is still not enough because they're going off into Bardsborough Affairs. Which is onto New Hampshire Avenue and onto Route seventy. Um, looking at the plans, there's a lot of side streets and I think one of the problems that we make in Lakewood is we don't give enough side streets usage. I, I find the plan, the, the amount of houses excessive at sixty, but you have five side streets. That if you put side streets through and eliminate houses, you'd have, you would at least get people a chance to be able to get in and out of that development. Without just having to go in one area, wanting just one in two areas, okay, you have a lot of streets, correct if I'm wrong. But you have Fuller Street, there's one that says Sally. Glacier Avenue. Uh, Sand, looks like uh, Sandvik Avenue, Picken Avenue, so you have a lot of avenues Abe. But I think um, we could eliminate some streets and I, I also agree that if we put a synagogue in one of those areas also gives access. Um, to people to have not only their own synagogue, the amount of houses that are there, sixty houses, even if you're gonna put fifty houses. There's still a lot of houses in that general area and you're gonna have a lot of other people coming into that general area. Think that, you know, it's a very dense project.
We discussed this, we discussed this at the time that the use variance is granted and that's what the alternative access was put in for.
I know Baron, but all we grant the use variance is just for use, has nothing to do with.
No, I, I understand, I understand that, granted, I, I concur with you on that, but we did discuss this issue as to which road should be opened up. This whole discussion, that whole discussion was had and the consensus was that we're gonna give this, you know, this, this. Alternate access that's gonna lead into the adjacent development and that satisfied the board. Now I have conferred with the applicants and they are willing to give up one full duplex, so that would be two units. And they would put a shul onto the property as the board, as the board would like. In addition to that, they will work with the neighboring, with the neighboring landowner, we could even, we could even get him on tonight, on to, on to, for the board to. Hear from him if you'd like to, as far as how large his shul and how much we can, you know, do with that.
It's, it's, I'll tell you the honest truth, when it comes to his shul, I really need to see the plan of it, not just hearsay, not just.
That's why we're recommending that we take out, we take out two units, we, and we give you a shul. That would be our recommendation, this way the board gets the shul that they want, they get two units out, which also will take out of the density, which will also make the board members happy. And I think that would be the solution.
Talk about what Mr. Gonzalez mentioned as far as the neighboring paper streets, which they're only paper streets, they're not real streets. Um, the fact is that when we looked at this, connecting to the neighboring property through seventy really solves a tremendous problem. I know that's not why the board sent us back to the drawing board for secondary, as the, as the chairman said. But it does provide a much better, and we have Scott Kennel here to testify about that if you want to hear. It does make traffic much, much better, because you had a lot of people who are going to be in that corner. And the only way in and out of the neighboring property, which is a lot more units, is to make a right out. And a, and a, and a right in, and they would have to go onto Route seventy, right out, all the way down, come all the way around again, just to get across Locust Street. Or to get to Locust Street where most of the uh, community is living. So, we're actually solving a, a, a significant problem that existed with the prior neighboring property. And I'm asking the board to consider that we're actually making things much, much, much better for two communities. And I want to reiterate, we only took the, the shul out at the request of the neighboring property owner. And we're committing to put it back in, we don't even need, if you don't want us to come back to you to show anything, we'll just put it in. And we'll put in um, a large enough shul to accommodate a hundred and twenty people, which is more than enough and more than you typically stipulate. For a community of this size, um, I think uh, Brian could show you where we would put it, it's a very easy fit. Put it at the end near the cul-de-sac, which is where it would belong, right next to the open space. Um, so that it, it, it really works very, very well, um, and that's something that we could commit to.
Ralph, when you're, when you're referring to the shul, or, I'm sorry, when you're referring to the neighboring property. Can you give us an idea of what's going on over there, you know, you keep on saying neighboring property, neighboring property?
Abe, I think it's irrelevant.
Well, I'll tell you why I'm asking. I know this is a standalone project and we're gonna make it work, but if we're gonna use this street as a connector road. Out onto seventy and add out to New Hampshire Avenue, where is the neighboring property um, entranceway to this project? Is it all on seventy?
All on seventy.
It's all on seventy. This street that you're putting in over here, will this be his, his, his road?
Mr. Chairman, I think you should address these to Scott Kennel, I think Scott would be the appropriate person to address these if we can call him.
There are other issues besides that road that we need to discuss too guys.
No, I think, I think we need to call Scott Kennel and get Scott's testimony.
Okay.
Okay?
Can.
Okay.
I just asked something. Mayor, do you want to say something?
No, but I think that at the end of the day, we're gonna have to have a place like this with a shul. We're talking about a hundred and twenty people that are praying, at, at, at max, plus children. And having a proper design of where the shul is gonna be with parking, I don't see how it makes sense anyway.
Agreed. Uh, if we're getting Scott Kennel on, can I, can he address some other issues too? And I agree with Mayor about the shul and you need to show where the parking is gonna be for the shul, the size of the shul. Um, uh, if, if Brian remembers on Squankum Road, you put up a safety uh, turnoff type of thing for buses. Now I can just imagine on garbage day and bus day, trying to get up and down this street, how, how is that gonna work? If somebody gets stuck on, on the street, a car breaks down. Um, behind, a, a car breaks down, how's a bus gonna get through uh, that, that, that area? Is there parking on the street or no parking on the street? Please address these issues too, the first unit looks like it's close to the street, if you can address that also. Thank you.
Okay, Scott?
Is Mr. Kennel, raise your right hand, do you swear or? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth or help you God?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Kennel, if you can, um, I guess, describe the findings in your report and ask, answer Mr. Langley's questions.
Again, Scott Kennel with McDonough and Ray Associates, uh, as far as the other development to the north. Uh, that was approved for seventy-four townhomes. It has a community building of, or shul of approximately thirty-nine hundred square feet. And then it also had retail and office uses, so that you can create internal trips and services available to. Again, that development, but then they'll become available to the, the new residents on this project. Which will help reduce the um, number of external trips. Um, but as far as our analysis, I, we did a worst case and had all traffic to and from New Hampshire Avenue. And we still provided a level service C, and I think you have to realize that the benefit of the access where it's located. And being right in, right out, is you have the Locust Street intersection to the south. That platoons and provides gaps in traffic to assist people exiting. Similar to, the project to the north has a right in, right out access to Route seventy. And NJDOT approval was secured on that two years ago. And similar to that, that driveway as well benefits from the traffic signal, Route seventy in New Hampshire to provide the gaps. To accommodate traffic in and out of the site, so from an accessibility standpoint. The access drives to Route seventy, the one to New Hampshire Avenue, in my opinion are, are located in, have, have good locations. That take the benefit of adjoining traffic signals to help movements of traffic in and out of the site.
Okay, that means it's not an emergency access, you're opening up a full road there.
Well, I think that's what we talked about, yeah, in the, earlier on in the testimony. I had done my original analysis with just all access, all traffic from the sixty dwellings, now fifty-eight. To and from New Hampshire Avenue, so that in my opinion would have been a worst case, conservative analysis.
Scott?
Yes.
To exit uh, on, on to cross uh, New Hampshire Avenue to turn left. You're crossing four lanes, three lanes, and for the most part, you won't get across. The traffic going on, on New Hampshire Avenue is a major highway. And I, I've gone there all the time, you're not gonna get out, the people are not gonna be able to make a left turn.
Yeah, left turns are prohibited, we're not proposing left turns, the county.
So how, so then, then how are they going to get south from the project?
To get south, they have to do, there's one of two routes, if, from, then a Hampshire Avenue access. They have to go north on Roots, on New Hampshire Avenue. Cross Route seventy and there's a jug handle that they can make. And then they come through, yeah, they have to go through the intersection twice, correct. Um, the other approach is, is they go out to the Route seventy access. And they make a right turn, they go down to Tobin. Make a U-turn and then come through the New Hampshire Route seventy intersection with the jug.
In addition, this is an intersection of a four-lane county road and a four-lane state road. That's major traffic.
Correct, and I, and I'm, I'm of the opinion that there'll be some reduction in traffic loads at intersection. Once the Vermont Avenue connection to Chestnut is improved. Because right now, you don't have that connection, the only other north-south connection is out towards Route nine. When the, when the Vermont Avenue extension to Chestnut is, which is under construction right now, is opened. That's gonna help, um, in my opinion relieve some pressure at that intersection. Also, you have to remember that the county is in final design phase for the traffic signal at New Hampshire and Chestnut. Again, roadway network improvements are gonna help traffic flow.
Yeah, but there's more development coming on Locust.
Oh, understood, understood, and that was considered in, in, in the analysis um, that we have presented.
Okay.
Road is benefiting, excuse me, one more question, one more statement really. This road is really to be used by both projects. Uh, the, the project that's here now and the uh, um, the one I guess to the north of it. They will be coming down Blood Budelman Way to get out to New Hampshire, is that correct?
There will be, there will be some residents from that development that will utilize the uh, new roadway here. I think, yeah, I realized too, that the other development has commercial uses. That'll be a benefit to these, the residents on the project before you tonight.
Can I?
You know, without having to go down to the, the public roadways.
Scott, Mosh, Mosh.
I didn't hear Scott, could you, Scott, can you repeat what you said?
One second, Mosh, give me a minute. That's exactly what I was wondering before, when you cut me off, I was wondering before, what's coming in in the next, next project next door? Especially when I know they're gonna be utilizing both, um, on Boldman Way and that new road out on the seventy. We have no idea how, how it's gonna intertwine together, that was exactly what I asked before.
Well, I, I, you heard, did you hear me when I told you what was proposed for that other development, or did I break out?
You probably broke out.
Okay, the development to the north consists of seventy-four townhomes. It includes a shul, it includes retail and office uses. So there's gonna be internal um, services, commercial services that'll benefit those residents on the northern community as well as. The, the new residents on the application before you tonight. So there'll be some shared trips, uh, as well as improved access for both communities.
And, and, and what kind of shul is it gonna be built there? Do you have any idea, no, no, I'm sorry, not that, I meant to ask you, what kind of shul is gonna be built there, right? And where is it gonna be built? Is it gonna be closer to the seventy and is, and is this new development next door gonna have its own entrance and exit? Um, to their project, or are they gonna utilize this new road that they're cutting in?
My understanding is they're gonna tap into the roadway network that is uh, created on the project to the north. The, the shul and the, and the commercial buildings will be located closest to Route seventy. And closest to New Hampshire Avenue, so they'll be in the northwest quadrant of that development.
Well, around that gas, there's an excellent gas station, I believe, in that corner right there, right?
Correct, it'll be to the east, it'll be the eastern gas station.
Okay, so this road, Boldman, Boldman Way is gonna, Boldman Way is gonna be the main road. Which will come through this development that we're discussing now, and then will intersect in the middle to pick up the traffic. To go in and out of this new development on the north. So this, so this road.
Hundred and thirty-four units with basements will be using Budelman Way.
Plus commercial.
Anybody that needs a shortcut to New Hampshire without.
Somebody that wants to go north.
Seventy. Anybody wants to get back into Lakewood is going through Budelman Way. Uh, we asked for emergency access, but I think we might have made things worse. I think Obie's uh, idea of a paper street going the other way might be better.
Mosh, we've been looking at emergency access, we asked for another entranceway to get in here and get out. But now we find out that it's also picking up all the traffic from the neighboring town, from the neighboring um, um, development.
Right, if anybody, anybody that wants back to Lakewood has to go back to New Hampshire. Because Route seventy is taking you away from Lakewood, it's, it's further.
Well, well, not necessarily, not, I, I would, in my opinion, there may be a portion of the residents of the northern community that would use. The New Hampshire Avenue, but given the layout of the community to the north. It's my opinion to be more convenient for the majority of those residents to go out to Tobin. And use the jug handle at Tobin, which is approximately fifteen hundred feet from the driveway. To make the U-turn or take Tobin up to Oak Street and work their way north to wherever your destination is. is.
Mr. Kennel, can I add to the chair, please? Mr. Kennel, I have one question. Where is Budelman Way, uh, adjacent to?
Going all the way down to Tobin, they're gonna?
Locust Street and New Hampshire Avenue. Locust Street is, is an intersection of New Hampshire Avenue, how far is that across from your guys' intersection?
Uh, if you give me a minute, I'm gonna say it's about a thousand feet, but I can confirm that.
Paper streets that I'm talking about can butt in, into a, uh, an intersection, and they intersect on Locust Street. Because what I'm trying to get at is, if you give them an access to Locust Street, Locust Street already has a light. So therefore, then the, the people going in and out of that area would be able to go north and south with a light. Okay, and they don't have to worry about, you know, trying to get, make a left-hand turn onto New Hampshire Avenue. Okay, you know, because other people are gonna be living on New Hampshire Avenue, and it's easier for people to get in and out. So I think that by adding a couple of streets that, that are there already as paper streets will give access to not only the people that are gonna live there, but anybody wanting to, either, uh, further south onto New Hampshire Avenue could be, you know, easy to go into that area, and if they have a light on Locust Street, now it's much even better, because now you can get a traffic that's gonna go through it and not have to worry about, well, I have to wait for the stop sign or whatever to be able to get out and watch the people coming that are going south also.
I agree that that's, that's, your scenario you described is definitely an improved, um, accessibility to the site. Uh, I just don't know if the means are there to do that, because you have other properties and property owners to the south. Um, I don't know whether the topography, if there's any wetlands, I, again, that's something I haven't explored or investigated, so.
We, we have, and it's, it's, it's onerous. Uh, we don't own the properties, um, but I'm sure that sooner or later there'll be other, uh, people coming in front of the board, what we, maybe there, and, and really, we, we're a little bit surprised, because we did follow the board's direction on this. Uh, so I'm a little taken aback at, uh, you know, we, we, it's not the first time we're here, and again, I want to remind you that there is an existing, uh, use approved already for residential, uh, on this site, and I think the board agreed at the last time that we were just making it better and coming up with something that is much more, um, people want duplexes, they don't want townhouses, they don't want small, single-family homes. So the board agreed and said, uh, try to make this connection, and we were directed to make this connection with the property owner next door. Um, so it's hard for us as an applicant to be told, come this way, then come that way, and I think everybody should understand, these are major, uh, you know, we've been waiting for a long time to develop this property, uh, we've come to the board in good faith a few times, um, we followed your direction, we negotiated a long time, uh, with the neighboring property owner to get this access, um, uh, removed the shul at his request, put it back today at your request, but to say to us now, okay, come back another time, because we want you now to go ahead and explore, um, putting in a paper street, uh, and, and property that we don't own and don't control, um, you know, we, we, you know, that's, that's another, uh, meanwhile, um, you know, we, we have an existing use, and the board agreed that this was a better use, so I, I, or better, better setup, so we're, we're willing to, um, provide the access that the board asked for, whether it's emergency or not is really up to you. Um, we, 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 we thought, and I think Scott Kennel testified, that we're making a condition actually better, and, and, and Mosh, you actually said, you know, that we don't provide through traffic, and then you said, when we provide through traffic, it makes it worse also. And the truth is, it's true on both sides, you have, you have the benefits of both, but really, you have an existing property next door, then stuck with a right-in, right-out on Route seventy, and that is a problem, and we all know that's a problem. It's an approved use, it's gonna be built, it has its site plan approval and everything, that's fine, but this makes things better, not worse. And, and, and you've heard, I'm not a professional, but Scott Kennel is, and, and, and I don't know if you wanna ask Terry or not, but your professionals, I think, would agree that having the, the through access is better, um, because people who wanna go, uh, to Tom's River, uh, or, or wanna go to Locust Street, or wanna make a right onto New Hampshire, and that's a, this is a better way for them than having to go all the way around. And having these options, people will find a better way. Um, we, we, we will, uh, put in the, the, the full shul, and, and we agreed to a size and everything, we can easily park it, we have a great spot to put it, and, um, you know, we're asking the board to understand the applicant also, we've been coming back over and over and over again, uh, we followed your directive, and, uh, you know, I think we're making it better, not worse.
Ralph, Ralph, with all due respect, okay? Um, yes, you were trying to make it better, however, when you started to mingle your next-door project together with yours and using your main street, um, your street out onto seventy, right in and right out, without us knowing what's going on on the other project, is, is, is broader for the fellow board members. It's not that we're, we're driving you crazy, and we're telling you, come back with this and come back with that, it's the fact that you now are telling us that your main drag over here, Budelman Way, and this main drag will be the new way and the new main road for this project next door, when we have no preview on the project's door, and we don't know what's going on next door, we don't see anything. Now, if you were to tell me that the project next door is gonna use this main drag, um, as a secondary entranceway into their project, that'll be a different story. We don't know anything that's going on next door. So how do I know that seventy-six units are not gonna use, um, Budelman Way and this new road as your main access and gonna create more traffic out onto this development? So if you were to tell me, okay, you know what, this is only here as an, as, as an auxiliary way of in and out, there's going to be another, another, um, entranceway into this project next door to pick up all the commercial traffic.
Of course there is. Mr. Chairman, there is an existing, existing approval with access onto Route seventy, we're just giving him another way, which everybody agrees is better.
Well, well, that's not what I heard till now, till now we all just heard that, yes, they're gonna utilize this, this is gonna be, I asked the question.
No, it's not gonna be, uh, so let me be clear, and let's go, I, I.
I asked that question a million times.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm testifying, I affirm to tell the truth, there's an existing seventy-four units.
Somebody's body in there, hold on, who's speaking?
Mosh, is there a copy of the site plan, so we don't have to guess? Does anybody have?
I never saw, I don't know what's going in next door.
We, we, we don't have the site plan at this time, I, I believe we presented it when we came in with the use, but it's seventy, it's, it's seventy-four townhouses, uh, and a commercial building. And when we came in for the use, we indicated that we would have this as an emergency access, and the board is the one who said it would be better as a full access, and I tend to agree with them that it would be better as a full access. We all know that the majority of the traffic from this development is not going to Tom's River, it's going to Lakewood, so it's gonna go north. As Scott testified, there's the availability to get out on Route seventy, which will be the easiest access for most of the seventy-four townhouses and the adjoining development, and then they go Tobin, and they go Tobin to Oak, and, and the Lakewood drivers, uh, are very, uh, adept at finding the easiest ways to get somewhere, and there are those, those roads. If we're sending the vehicles south to Locust Street, we're, we're making, we're gonna overload the Locust Street intersection, if we do that without connecting the two projects, then the, the other project has to go all their, all their traffic goes onto Route seventy. So there's benefits and detriments each way. If we open it up to everybody, then we're just gonna have a free-for-all, uh, and, and, and the, the roads aren't gonna be safe.
Chairman, can I say something, please, sir? Chairman, may I say something?
Yes, yes, Jerry, go ahead.
We've been talking over an hour about the traffic issues, and it's abundantly clear that at least at this point, the zoning board is not buying Mr. Kennel's report, rightly or wrongly, they're not buying it. Uh, we can keep on talking for another hour, but I don't think we can design the traffic issues tonight. We can't design them. My suggestion would be that perhaps, uh, a traffic engineer from Terry's office review this matter with Mr. Kennel and come back to us, because we're not gonna design this tonight, and, and nobody on the zoning board is qualified from an engineering standpoint to do so. And, and to, and to, you know, try to design a traffic for sixty, a hundred and twenty-unit project on the fly like this, I don't think is fair to anyone, certainly not the applicant or the other people.
Terry, uh, Jerry, it's, it's not that, it's designing this traffic flow together with the next-door project, which we, which we have no idea what's going on over there. Besides that, we were told it's seventy-four units plus retail and offices.
It's a safety issue, I, I, I agree with Jerry, and, uh, we, we should ask the applicant to, uh, figure this out. Uh, if Budelman Way is going to be, uh, traffic, please design the road to handle that traffic, not like, not just for the sixty, for the hundred and thirty-four units, and, uh, bus entrances, exits, how buses getting in and out, how garbage trucks getting in and out, uh, where the synagogue is gonna be and where the parking is gonna be. I recommend, uh, that you come back and draw it up, and, uh, uh, sorry, Ralph, but this is a bifurcated application a year and a half ago, uh, we can't all remember all the details from that far back. Um, and, uh, if, if, one more thing, um, Brian, if you remember what we did on Squonkam Road, something for the buses, it was like a, uh, about where that first unit is on the opposite side of the, uh, recharge basin, it might be an idea to put something, uh, uh, some sort of lane where you're off of New Hampshire, so either someone can get like a running start to get into, uh, not where you're pulling out of Budelman Way and directly onto oncoming traffic, uh, on New Hampshire, something where he can pull in and ease into if, Terry, I don't know what the legal term is, but you understand what I'm saying? Where you can like ease into traffic, not just pull out of a driveway onto New Hampshire where people go in fifty, sixty miles an hour.
Sounds like you're talking about some form of, of an acceleration lane onto New Hampshire?
Acceleration, acceleration.
Right.
Well, that would be something the county's gonna look at anyway. Uh, if they feel it's warranted, they're gonna require it.
Right, so I, I, it just doesn't look too safe here. I, I would recommend, take it back, come back next month. If I'm gonna vote on this tonight, I'm, I'm not gonna be, uh, not gonna be happy.
I'd like to add, I can't do the chair, okay? I also like them to, to look at the right-of-way of those other paper streets, because if you have a connecting road to Locust Street, we gotta remember, now we have two accesses north to Lakewood. Why? Because Vermont Avenue is opening up straight through to Route seventy. So if they go down to Locust to Vermont, they'll be able to make a right-hand turn and go right into Lakewood, which is school alley, which, most of the schools gonna be there, and the kids in the buses can go straight down that street. Okay, and now we're not, now we gave them access, if those are right-of-ways, then they are, you know, they're owned by the town, and not, you know, they're, they're paper streets, they're made there so that way they can be put into streets. I think that's a better way, now we have two ways to be able to go north, you have Vermont Avenue on one side and New Hampshire Avenue on the other.
I, 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 you know, Mrs. Weinstein, uh, attorney, I just wanna, I just wanna say one thing, uh, uh, Mosh, we, we're, we're willing to come back next month and, 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 and have more clarity, and, um, you know, I apologize for the lack of clarity tonight, it's very difficult to do things, uh, in this manner, and I, I feel for the board. Um, just wanna remind everybody that, you know, we, we're just trying to improve as well, it's an existing approval, and, um, it only has one way in, one way out, um, the board did direct us to connect to the neighboring property, um, you know, and, and we did that, uh, and we feel a little bad that now we're being criticized for doing that, but we understand where you're coming from, we understand where you're coming from. Um, we will come back, um, we'd like to be back next month, or the next, when you, when you let us step back in, so we'll do our homework. Um, we will come in, we'll show, we'll show the synagogue, uh, we'll show, um, I, I don't think, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, that we could connect, uh, so those connections are, are just, we looked at that, and, uh, while we wish we could, we could do that, and it actually would have made our life easier, uh, with the neighboring property owner, we wouldn't have to connect to him, everybody likes their own project, um, and all the negotiations we had to go through, uh, but that is not a property that we own, uh, it's, involves a lot of paper streets and condemnations and who knows what, and, uh, I can't testify to exactly all the issues, but it just, um, it, it's not, it, it looks good on paper, but in reality, it probably would never work. Um, but we can give you a full application showing the neighboring property, um, showing you, uh, maybe Scott could do, uh, you know, prepare better, looking at, just understand that we are here tonight for a project, there's already the seventy-four units, the commercial and the neighboring property that exists. Our use already was approved years ago, we're just trying to make things better, so we're not asking you to put residential where it doesn't belong, we're not asking you to put access onto New Hampshire where it doesn't belong, that already exists, we're just trying to work together to make things better. We, we hear what you're saying, we're not gonna shove this down your throat tonight, we don't wanna stand on ceremony, we'll come back, we hope we get in, uh, um, Miriam, how do we preserve our spot in the queue, so I don't have to wait another year and a half and then?
Ralph.
Deal with memories again.
Ralph, uh, we need to, okay, I just wanna correct you one thing, I don't think the board has criticized you in any which way of what you have done. Let's, let's clear, let's clear, let's clear the table on that, okay? The difference is that when you presented the project over here, our job is to make sure that it's safe and that it looks, and it works, okay? When we started to connect the other project, like, so like I said before, it's a different picture of when we're just coming in for sixty-four, sixty units with a, with a, another access road. Now, it's a total of a hundred and fifty, you know, combining everything together. Second of all, when you were here a year and a half ago, Locust Road and, and the flea market and everything else wasn't built, so we see.
It wasn't, it wasn't a year and a half ago, it was in December of two thousand nineteen. So the flea market was long approved.
Yeah, okay, but now, when now, when people, tenants are moving in onto Locust Road, and everything is working, you see how busy the intersections became, and that's why.
It didn't change that much in the nine months, it was, it was nine months ago, it wasn't eighteen months ago, let's just clarify that.
It's changed pretty drastically, changed pretty drastically from the beginning time when Ralph came in with the first application back in the day.
Beginning time, but, but just to clarify.
Please finish. And I'll give you a nice video, and a nice, um, three-D video how it all plays out. It's irrelevant, it's irrelevant, things keep on, on the fast track, keep on changing, we learn from our mistakes, we see things differently every month moving forward, we see things differently, we wanna make things better. So I'm sorry, Ralph, we're not here to criticize you.
Can I just point out something?
It's fine, but, but we, we, we definitely just keep in mind that there's an existing, um, approval that we're trying to make better.
But Ralph, can I just point out something that? Hey, uh, Mr. Chairman, let me just, I just wanna point out one thing, when you guys came for the first use permit, we were very clear that, you know, we're, we're proving up to this amount of units, it doesn't mean that we're gonna look at it and we're going to say, once you show us the actual, what you wanna build, that it's gonna work. So now we're looking at it after, and you put all the duplexes in, we're looking at it, and we're trying to figure out how it's going to work. So I know that, I'm sure my other board members would agree, that if you took out, you, you took, you cleaned up, uh, you took out maybe one or two units, I, I know you're putting the shul back in there, there's some other things that you could do to make it look a little less dense, and it won't give us such a headache, and we won't be saying sixty units, and then there's another seventy units from the other side coming in altogether, going into one road. I know I'm concerned about this, the length of the road and the fact that I don't see how buses are coming in and out, I don't see how garbage, um, trucks are coming in and out, and, and I don't see how people are waiting for the bus at the end of New Hampshire, because the buses are not gonna turn in to this cul-de-sac, there's no way. And so, all those things have to be addressed, we, we did bring them up at the other meeting, the main point we brought up at the other meeting was, was about the road and access, I understand, and I appreciate that you worked on that, but there were a lot of other things though, all, all these points were, were talked about at the other meeting, and we're seeing everything addressed.
Understood, and we'll address it the next time we come in front of you.
Okay, so you're not withdrawing it, you're tabling it, and you're coming back?
Correct, and that answers, that answers the question that Ralph asked before, how does he preserve his spot? We're gonna carry the application.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, so you're not withdrawing it, you're gonna, but you will not be ready for the next, um, application for October, you will be ready for November, is that correct?
Uh, I don't know that we're not gonna be ready for October, why can't we be ready for October?
What is it, in two weeks?
Meeting is October nineteenth.
Oh, October nineteenth, that's four weeks, that's fine.
Chairman?
Yes.
Speaking as an engineer, you don't wanna rush the applicant's engineers, you wanna give them time to properly research this and properly give the board the information they're asking for.
We have three weeks to do that and can be on the October meeting, so if the board would carry us to the October meeting, if we're not ready, we'd have to move.
You'll postpone, you'll postpone it for the November meeting?
Correct.
Very simple, okay? Can I have a motion to table this application? Our motion. Motion from Mayor Gelli, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from, from, from Marty Griggs, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
So we're carrying it to October nineteenth.
Correct. Yes, without first notice and without, um, um, with waiver of time. Yes, without first notice and without, um, um, with waiver of time.
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson? Mr. Halverson?
Mr. Oliverson.
He said yes.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Langley?
Yes.
The notary, he's not here.
He's not there.
Not here, Mr. Inver?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
What he said, he said?
Yes, he said yes.
Am I muted?
Alice?
Yes.
Mr. Capisham?
Yes, so just, just for the record, this application will continue, uh, October, on October nineteenth meeting. Thank you everyone.
Thank you all very much.
Safety, Ralph, main thing is safety, let's keep it very, very safe somehow.
We'll do our best, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Our last application for the night, forty, forty-eight A, Washington Management.
On John Street, the site plan was approved.
Can I just ask everyone that's not part of this new application to please disconnect?
Yeah, and I just wanna try to get my client to get back on since we asked him to get off.
Right, Scott Kennel, can you disconnect or are you staying on for this next application?
He's on, he's on this one too.
Okay, who else is on?
Brian is also on and we're gonna try to get S B back on.
Let me begin this while we're looking. The applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval for the construction of a two-story office building with a six thousand eight hundred fifty square foot, footprint. Floor will have an additional twenty-four foot wide overhang. Indicated to have an area of five thousand three hundred fifty-one square feet. Property situated in the R seven five family residential zone and is located on John Street. That's from Terry Boe.
What was the number on the application again?
The application is four one four eight A.
Washington, uh, Washington Street?
Yes.
John Street.
Washington Management, but it's John Street.
Okay, thank you.
Are we all good, ready to start?
Is, is, is your friend S B back on?
He says he's gonna just watch it from the livestream.
A livestream?
He was watching it on the livestream from the website, so he says he doesn't have to get back on.
Okay, okay, fine.
If we need him to testify, we'll get him back on, but I don't think we will. Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Miriam Weinstein on behalf of the applicant, Washington Management LLC. This one as well, I'm sure the board recalls, the applicant received use variance approval in a bifurcated application. This one was only in June of this year, so this one came back pretty quickly, hopefully you all remember it, it was only two months ago. We received use variance approval to construct a professional office building on this site located on John Street, a few lots off of Route nine. The use variance approval was conditioned on the applicant attempting to get sewer service to the property. We will provide testimony on the applicant's endeavors, um, as far as that goes in that regard. We are not requesting any variance relief with this application and with that, I'm once again going to ask you to have Brian Flannery sworn. Jerry, you gotta get off mute.
Let me try again, Mr. Flannery, do you, do you swear to tell the truth or help you got it?
I do, Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. As Miriam indicated, this is an application, uh, that was in, uh, the end of last year for, uh, a bifurcated application for the use. As indicated on sheet one oh seven of the tax map, it consists of two lots, Lot Fifty-One, which was a parking lot for the Macedonia Baptist Church, which is on the north side of John Street, and Lot Five, which is an existing single-family home. He submitted to the board and aerial view of the site, have to look at it upside down if you wanna look at it in the same orientation as the existing house in the parking area would adjacent to the senior apartments that were developed by, uh, the Macedonia Baptist Church to the east. Uh, the house is immediately adjacent to their parking lot across the street on the old Macedonia Baptist, uh, uh, church building, uh, near the corner of John and, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King or, or the apartment building. Uh, we, we presented at the time why we felt the, this, uh, office use on the site, uh, was a, uh, a preferred use over the, uh, residential in the area due to the nature of the property and the existing, uh, uses. Uh, as, as indicated by Miriam, uh, the, one of the conditions was that, uh, we would endeavor to get sanitary sewer service to the property and we are indicating that we will have a list. Time out, I don't have a set of plans, um. I'm thinking maybe I should re, I don't have a set of plans, should I just, you have seven members, maybe Mr. Gross will vote on it?
Shouting or, or helping?
No, they need to, Misch, one second, we'll get him here.
She has her phone with her?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I don't know when it will be finishing, but I can't run anymore.
Jerry, I don't have a set of plans if, uh.
But, but you didn't get that box?
I, yeah, I got the box, I went through the box. Mine does not have a set of, I, I have the engineer's report, the, um, the paperwork, but no set of plans.
Why don't we email, why can't someone email it?
That's not a bad idea.
I'm trying, but I'm not.
Do you have, do you have seven members without me?
No.
To the chair, can I ask a question while we're waiting?
Yes, go ahead. Brian?
Yeah?
Someone has a question.
Aren't we go, are you going to be able to hook up to the sewer system?
It's gonna be easy, uh, we, we, I submitted a plan showing that physically we can't make the gravity sewer work. We have requested from New Jersey American, I have had numerous conversations from them, the only way to physically make this work is we have an ejector pump in our building and we pump via force main, uh, up the street to where we can have sufficient cover to have gravity and tie into the line. New Jersey American Water does not like it. The answer I was given is they've, uh, uh, refused to do that for the last, uh, half dozen applicants that have asked in Lakewood, uh, and they're not gonna change their money now. My response to them is, I think you were wrong the last half dozen times and just because you were wrong six times doesn't mean you should keep being wrong, that it's a benefit. Uh, we have left that, the area open in case, uh, there's, we can't get them to agree to the, uh, uh, the force main in the right of way. Uh, and, and it's a small septic system which will have to be reviewed and meet all of the state standards, uh, and it's a small septic system that would work. The applicant would prefer, we know the board would prefer, it's better for everybody, it's better for New Jersey American, they have another customer, but, uh, they, they run things by committees and if one person on the committee says no, I'm not gonna stop pushing them, uh.
Township has no say?
Township has no say.
It has no say, I mean, this is an established part of town, to be put in a septic field for an office building makes absolutely no sense.
Well, the, the only good news about it is that the people to the east of us and the people to the west of us are hooked up on public sewer, so it's not like everybody in the neighborhood is gonna have septics, which tends to create mounding and overload systems. We would be the only one and, and we're gonna be eliminating the house that's already on a septic system, which probably has the same amount of flow that the office building would have. So it's, as far as the impact to the environment, that's not really an issue, but the applicant doesn't wanna have a septic system because that requires annual maintenance, it, it requires, uh, things that an office doesn't wanna comply with. Uh, I, I, uh, I'm not giving up with New Jersey American, but I have not been able to twist their arm far enough yet to get them to say, yes, you can put a force main in the right of way. Their story is that once the pipe gets into the right of way, they have to maintain it. I've offered that we would do a legal agreement and, uh, the past instances where they've said no, it's been residential houses and it would be difficult for them to make some residential house, uh, maintain it, but certainly in office building, there's, there's a, a commercial owner, uh, that they have that, uh, uh, the ability to require them to do something or they can shut them down and, and, and nobody's, uh, nobody's gonna be put out on the street. Uh, I, I, again, it's a committee that you need to deal with, uh, and there's six guys and their response is always, well, we'll run it up the flagpole, uh, and, and then they get back to me and they say, we, we, we're not inclined to do that. Uh, I, I have been pushing since, uh, the date of the last meeting, I, I started the pushing prior to that because the applicant wants it to be tied up to public sewer as well.
Have the plans now, uh, Brian?
The plans now show a, uh, a force main, uh, going to the, going to the public sewer, which is, uh, east on John Street. But we've left the area and, and the agreement last time was if we get it, we're not gonna put more buildings in that area, we, we leave open space or put parking. At this point, we're leaving it as open space in the unlikely event that I'm not able to twist their arms and, and I, I, I will be reaching out to other people who can have more, uh, power to twist their arm than just the engineer for the applicant.
So, so Brian, let me ask you, what's gonna come in that space if you do succeed later on?
Uh, it, it'll be a open space area for the people in the office building to, uh, sit outside in case we have another COVID situation where they need to be separated from other.
Are you expecting that where COVID is over, you said another COVID situation?
Far as I'm concerned, COVID's been over for quite a while, we flattened the curve in March. It was completely flat in April and, and, and politics have been playing stupid games ever since.
I know who you're voting for, okay?
Don't give it away, Brian.
No more BS.
You, you, you just made it away, Brian.
This is killing me.
Okay.
Then getting back to the report, we came in for the use, we, we showed a building of nine thousand three hundred and eighty square feet, we pared it down slightly to ninety-two hundred and one square feet, we have parking that meets the ordinance, uh, the, uh, relief that we're, uh, asking for, if, if you look at Terry's report on page three, item one indicates that, that we need the use variance, which is granted, uh, I, item two is, uh, no bulk variances are required, uh, and item three is, uh, buffer appears necessary for the proposed, uh, parking, uh, on the east and west and, uh, on the, uh, uh, west side, we're putting a parking lot in where there was a parking lot, uh, and, and it's a, uh, a vacant property, uh, next to us that, that has environmental constraints that it's not gonna be built, so that there's, there's no reason to, uh, to buffer that area. On the east side, we have two parking spaces that are close to the parking lot of the senior, uh, uh, the senior housing that was put in by Macedonia Baptist. And again, if you look at the, the plan, they have parking that's equally close to the parking lot, so, so it's gonna be parking next to parking where there's really no need to provide that buffer. Uh, uh, the, the function of relief is we're providing driveways wider than thirty feet, a typical requirement that we get by, we're putting, providing better access than, uh, than a thirty-foot driveway would provide. Looking for the justification for the relief, when you look at the vision statement, it says on page seven of the, uh, two thousand and seventeen master plan, encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles such as a balanced mix of land uses, pedestrian-friendly and transit-oriented environments with a sense of place. Uh, it's my testimony that does this, uh, provide, uh, uh, sufficient educational, recreational and, and facilities to meet the needs of the public. This provides a, a nice ratable, uh, in an area where it's in the neighborhood. The municipal land use law NJAC forty-five D two under the purpose of the act is A, encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all Antonia State and a manner which is public health, safety, morals and general welfare. It's my testimony that this does this. Uh, E is provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of residential, recreational, commercial and industrial uses and again, it's my testimony that this does this. When we look at Terry's report with respect to, um, the, the items in the report, we, we will satisfy, uh, all of the comments if the board acts favorably during resolution compliance. The one item that I would need to comment on and provide testimony on is on page five, comment number six, where it indicates the survey shows freshwater wetlands delineated immediately to the west of the property and it indicates that we need a DEP LOI. Uh, my testimony is that it's an existing parking lot that we're using as a parking lot, we don't need that relief, we would provide the documentation to the board engineer, uh, as part of resolution compliance, uh, if the board acts favorably on this, uh, and, and, and we will, uh, if, it, it's, it's my opinion that the board engineer is gonna be convinced with the information that we submit him. Obviously, if the board engineer indicates that, uh, a, a DEP permit or a DEP submission is needed, we will have to do what the board engineer says. But I, I, I would like to point out that, uh, I, I try not to disagree with, uh, the, the board engineer in this particular case, I, I think it's that I have more information on this particular item, uh, and that, you know, if the resolution can say, we, we need to provide that information to the board engineer satisfaction, the remainder of the comments we would, uh, satisfy. Uh, he asked for testimony on the HVAC equipment, which would be, uh, roof-mounted, he asked for testimony on the building being ADA compliant and it will be, and testimony on the trash, it would be private pickup of the trash. Uh, and, and the remainder of the report will satisfy.
Where would that trash dump?
Trash area is in the back of the parking lot.
All the way in the back?
All the way in the back. And it's private pickup, so it would be scheduled to be picked up during nine hours.
By the way, what's that, what is that, um, depicting, all the way in the back, right, um, at the, at the fifteen-foot, um, rear yard setback line on the, on the right side? What is that?
Those are the dumpsters for the trash enclosure with fencing around it.
Those are the dumpsters, so how, how in the world is a dump, is a truck gonna swing around to pick that up?
The, the dumpsters. It's private pickup, there'll be dumpsters that'll roll out, the truck will pull in, they'll roll out, they'll lift them and then, and then they'll back out.
And then push them back in?
Yes, yep.
Not to, I'm not too excited on that.
Well, and, uh, the, uh, it, it's a commercial site where, where they have, uh, maintenance personnel that, that can accomplish that and it's private pickup, so, uh, all of that can be accomplished and, and it just costs the owner of the property more and the owner of the property is happy with that because, uh, it's, um, uh, it, it removes the, uh, dumpsters to a place that's, uh, you know, the least objectionable from an aesthetic standpoint.
Okay, um, okay, go ahead, I cut you off on the dumpster, but go ahead, keep on going.
Well, that's, I, I gave my testimony, we're.
Okay.
Use, we're here, uh, conforming with what we said we were gonna do with the use, uh, and we're gonna satisfy the board's comments, um, on the other items in the report.
So I have a, I just have a quick question for you. I guess this is a seven and a half foot walkway all the way to the back of the property? Uh, the main entrance is right here and, on the building is right here on this, on this, on the sidewalk over here?
Yes.
Um, so if, if their car's parked all, if this parking lot is all filled, how are people gonna get to the sidewalk? They have to squeeze their way, way through the cars? There's no sidewalk, there's no walkway?
You're talking about the front parking lot with the four parking spaces?
No, I'm talking about the big parking lot.
The big parking lot, they're gonna, they're gonna walk in between the cars?
Okay. They're gonna walk in between the cars, so there's no walkway to bring them into the parking lot? None at all?
But I, I'm having trouble following. But, I, I'm having trouble following you because anybody that parks in the 16 spaces on the west side of the site will walk across the driveway in between two cars and they'll be on that.
So, so if the cars are, if there are big cars and the cars are parked too close to each other, they won't be able to, they're going to have to find a nice spot where they could, where they...
The parking spaces are the standard nine-foot width.
I understand, I understand that. So everyone's going to have to squeeze themselves through parks, through parks?
If, if, if in the unlikely event that there's, uh, 17 oversized vehicles, you can see where each of the overhangs are, uh, there's a...
At the end of the day, at the end of the day, people are going to have to squeeze themselves between cars to get to the sidewalk.
Well, I, as I indicated, where the, uh, overhang is, there's two striped areas that would provide, uh, an, an area that, uh, for people to walk.
Where they can walk on, okay, fair enough, okay. Quite enough, enough garbage up in the back, this is over here.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
Is this building going to be built on a slab? Brian?
Um, pulling out architectural plans?
Okay.
Uh, I, I don't think so because I think we need the, uh, basement for mechanicals and...
No, well, it is, it is being built on a slab, Brian.
We had the issue that it was close to the, we didn't want to hole that down there and it was also a little bit close to wetlands.
It's being built, it's being built on a slab, there's no basement.
I, and, and I, since Miriam can't testify, I, I will give that testimony, it's being built on a slab.
Thank you, Brian, that's what I needed you to do.
I just needed to open the plan and look.
As long as Jerry's taking notes, I'm good.
Well, I'm not allowed to testify, that is true.
Anyone, does anyone have any further questions? Any board members have any questions?
No, you know, while I'm on...
Uh, yes.
The overhang, the overhang leads me to believe that maybe this may be used as a medical facility, is that...
No.
Why do you say that?
It's restricted to just, uh...
The, the approval of non-medical facilities.
Right, okay, no, because...
The parking wouldn't work for medical because medical needs three times as much parking.
That's, that's exactly my point. We can't, it can't handle the medical...
Exactly, and, and it's not, it's not intended for medical.
But, you know...
And, and, and it will be, and it will be restricted to non-medical.
Okay, because now, every medical facility has drive-up options unfortunately these days. So that's, that's what triggered the question.
No, it's, it's, it's not slated for medical.
Okay, just putting it on the record.
Okay, and other questions from anyone else? Seeing none, anyone from the public sent in any comments? Franny, did we get any comments?
No, not on this one.
Okay. Um, we have, we advertised before the address to this, correct? Do you want to throw it out there again? Okay. Um, well, wait a minute to see if we got...
Abe, I got a few comments, questions?
Okay, go ahead, John, go ahead, go ahead, Mosh.
Um, the, what's called, the entrance to the building, I am sorry, I don't have clear architectures. I'm trying to see it through, uh, an email. Uh, the, um, the entrance to the building, is it through the parking lot or through the handicap parking area?
It's through the parking lot.
And, um, and your requirement for parking spaces based on square footage is 36.8, is that correct?
Yes.
You're providing 37.
Correct.
Can't squeeze any more parking spaces?
Uh, no, we, we, it's, it's an existing parking lot and, and, and that's, that's all we got. I, I should point out that the, uh, planning board in 2017 recommended changing the parking schedule, uh, because the one per 300 didn't work. Uh, this is now based on one per 250. Uh, the, if, if we had used the old standard, we'd be showing that we had additional parking. Uh, but we're, we're complying and, and that's what the resolution of approval for the use indicated is that we would provide parking in accordance with the ordinance.
I think John Street is not a busy street, so there's some off-street parking, is that correct?
We're, we're not anticipating need off-street parking, but you're right, John Street is not a busy street.
And it's ratables, so...
Hey, Mosh likes ratables. Okay, fine. Uh, Franny, any, did any emails come in?
No.
No, okay, so can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve from, 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 Mosh Langley, you have a second? Can I have a second?
I think Mosh Ingber was saying something.
I don't hear anyone saying a second.
Morty Gross will second.
From Mosh Ingber.
Mosh Ingber, okay.
Okay, I'll call Mosh Ingber, that's...
Mr. Gelli?
Mr. Gelli?
He's not there.
Where is it? Mr. Gelli?
Mr. Gelli?
He's not, he's not connected.
Okay, Mr. Halverson?
No.
Dan Altalich?
Yes.
Mr. Ribb, Mr. Ingber?
Yes.
votes?
Yes.
Dan Altalich? Abe, Halverson?
Okay, good night and good luck, motion passes.
What'd he say?
He said yes.
Okay.
Who needs a second on that motion, please?
Uh, Morty Gross.
No, I have Mr. Ingber.
Mr. Ingber, sorry, Mr. Ingber, okay.
Thank you.
Good night, good night, Brian.
Thank you very much, good night.
Okay.
Three resolutions to approve and then the bills, Chairman.
Yes, I was going to, I was going to get there. Can I have a motion to approve all the resolutions from last month's meeting?
Motion.
Like the motion. All in favor?
Aye, yes.
Aye, can I have a motion to pay the bills from last month's meeting?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night and good luck.
By the way, the Giants are getting beat up. The Giants are getting beat up, 26-16.
Did that end that way? Right, good night, fellas.
Good night, everybody.
Matt?